You love it, morning.
About budget, no less.
You know, reading this is one of the biggest determining factors, but it just takes too much time through the public.
Yeah, I remember when I was a brand new council member, they said, this is, I went down to Boise for training. Some of you have been to that training down in Boise, and I think it was ICrimp or something like that. And they go, most important thing you do as a member of city council is the budget. It may seem like boring at times, or really into the weeds at times, or, but it's all the above. And it really is one of the most important things we do.
That attachment, reminder to relook at the document that the state prepares on the budget process. There's really good reaffirming, grounding aspects of looking at that.
All right, I bet you it's, one minute has passed, because I'm a slow talker, according to Erin. Whenever she writes my speeches, she goes, you can never get through on the long minute.
Why, right, for 30 seconds, because it'll take you five minutes.
Okay, well.
Or concise in your speech, so that's.
All right, we'll officially open the session, and, yeah, let's see. General, let's see, public comment, we didn't have anyone sign up, I'm assuming, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so we can jump right into the budget development introduction. I should probably ask for a roll call.
Mayor Giles.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Nielsen.
Here.
Councilmember Thrower.
Here.
Let the record show that Councilmember Menchessick is absent.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Forrest and Randy.
Great, well, thanks, everybody, for being here and your engagement, good morning. So, I think just to start, huge kudos to Randy for diving into this, and he's spent weeks poring over spreadsheets and meeting individually with department heads and looking at how the budget has been structured, and how that might be changed, improved, to make it as informative and transparent as possible, I think, and just looking at different ways to slice and dice it. I think one thing you'll see that's different this year is emphasizing, separating things that really fall into the category of capital improvements, and isolating out the O and M part, so that you can differentiate between those two. I think in the past, there was, you had sort of this creed of capital projects being put into the O and M budget in a way that probably arguably there was a reason to do it that way, but it, I think it made it hard to see what our core operations are, basically the things that the city has to keep doing, because it's staff that we're paying, or programs that we're obligated to keep running. So that's one difference, I think, that you'll see. And then, yeah, I think we can just dive into it.
The first item is the priorities.
Yeah, so, so to do the priorities discussion, what I did is I took the document, or the priorities that came out of the January, maybe you could, so that's over there. So what we did with the, this document is just did some brainstorming across the departments with the ideas that departments have in mind, or projects, or lines of effort that advance these priorities in some way. And the document's a little bit busy, sorry for that, so let me just explain it. The priorities that you came up with and agreed on in January, the kind of headline items, or the categories, are the bold text, so impact area and annexation, internal strategic and budgetary development, and so on. And then the first level of text below that, the, I guess, the bolded bullets are the, the kind of sub-priorities that you came up with in that discussion, so protect the impact area, manage and or annex, endowment plans strategically, and so on. So the next kind of list of subbullets behind that are ideas that we've come up with for things that we plan to do, or can do, that would advance that specific item under the kind of general category. So this is, you know, collaborative effort for ideas that department heads and I had for things that we have on our list to do, or plan to start doing in fiscal year 2026. Some of them maybe are earlier, already ongoing. So if you like, we can just go through and, and, you know, kind of briefly discuss and explain, or answer questions about any of these. You know, there's a lot of detail in here, and some of these are, we could discuss for hours, so I think that we don't, we want to try and not, like, really go down the gravel hole on a lot of this stuff, but get your feedback on whether the, the, the potential lines of effort that are in here are things that you are in favor of, and if you have suggestions for things that are missing, or that you'd like to see added, then we can consider it. And I, what will happen is when we come back for the next meeting, then we'll be discussing all this in more detail. So, apart, if, we'll go to the first one, impact area annexation, protect the impact area. I mean, I think we all know where that stands and what's going on. The city staff and you all have been doing what we can, I think, with the hand that we've been dealt, you know, deriving from the state statute. So that will continue, the county's meeting on Tuesday to continue their work session, and then I think we'll have to discuss after that where things go, what our actions are. Any comments, or? Manage and or annex endowment lands strategically. One thing that we are already doing is meeting with IDL quarterly, in theory, at least, we have a quarterly meeting to discuss, discuss what's going on with endowment lands. Julie and I have had a conversation about exploring just a little bit more what the, what IDL plans to do with those lands in the near term. I think one thing, the next item is sort of related, actually, develops to protect, like, in the media, there's been discussion of potential land swap. I think that the council would want to consider whether that's something you would support, it's not our decision, obviously, but how we could support that, it's something that ends up on the table.
Forrest.
Yeah.
Nathan's requested this, if you could send it out, either I would send it out.
Yeah, let me send it to you.
Because he has to go to chat first.
Yeah. I just finished kind of integrating all this this morning, sorry.
My initial thing from just looking at the first page and thinking, working this morning, kind of going, what is our priorities, and trying to look at all those line items that, I think this was a great, that from the first page, it looks like to me the great strategic priority of capturing the council's January data priorities, so I think this would be really helpful.
Yeah.
Sorry, well, just give me a minute while I. There, that should work, do you, do you see it, Nathan?
Yeah, it just showed up.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so this is, Nathan, this is the document that we had had in the cloud, and that you all were, any comments and suggestions to? Engage county and city officials to align growth management goals, ensure sustainable development within and around the impact area, I mean, all, these are all kind of interrelated. Internal strategic and budgetary development, so this is something that we've been talking a lot about as, as Randy has been diving into the budget. Do you want to talk about what your AP, here, a little bit, maybe, implement programs to leverage technology?
Do that right now?
Yeah, just, maybe just explain it briefly.
Sure, so when I, I came from Cascade Medical Center, and it's a very small organization, and the whole AP process was very labor intensive, and so we integrated a system called YOZ. And what it does is, it uses OCR technology, kind of scrapes an invoice, but it also uses AI to code everything. So, you know, in the old days, some, we'd have a person pull up an invoice, code the whole invoice, and then send it through the approval process, but with this new system, it drops in, and it auto codes everything, and then it drops to the primary A team person, it'll go to the department head. Essentially, it, it does the whole thing at the very end, then it'll dump into CASL, which is our general ledger system. At Cascade, it dropped our whole AP cycle down to maybe two hours a week, which is huge. So we were probably spending 20 to 30 hours a week, and it dropped it down to about two. So, you know, looking at our current process, I signed a big stack of checks this morning that you signed, and it, it should save all of us just a ton of time, and it's not very expensive, really. So that's an example.
Yeah.
So at this point, our main AP person has retired, Jody, but she agreed to stay on for a little while. So my hope is, is she's going to stay on, we'll integrate this new system, and then I won't need that FTE at all. And then it can be used, and those dollars, in better places than the AP cycle. So there's lots of other opportunities like that, that we'll be going into, but this was the most, the highest payback that I, that I've seen so far. So that's what I'm hoping that we all kind of get in that, in this mindset of leveraging technology.
Yeah, saving time.
And savings just of time.
More standard. Establish a capital replacement program with funding, so the idea here is that you basically look at your, your cap, your capital, assets, equipment, whatever, that has, that is depreciating, and every year, you set aside an amount of money equal to how much that has depreciated, with the goal in mind that eventually you, you know, when that reaches the end of its useful lifetime, you then have money to replace it. I think what's been happening is that we, we, the city is, has these fund reserves, and on paper, they look pretty large, but if you start thinking about the cost that you're eventually going to have to lay out to replace things that are wearing out, you, you don't have as many reserves as you, as you might think that you do. So a planning tool, really, to, to just make sure that we have a accurate picture of our financial situation. There are a couple of big items on here that we should start planning for and thinking about, in my opinion. One is that, we discussed this recently, but the Public Works facility, where, you know, where is that going to be? How much is it going to cost us? Public Works, this has already been started in some sense, in the, in the past year or two, there was this $500,000 kind of set aside for that facility, so continue planning for that. The fact that we don't own our own police department building is something that, I think, we need to start grappling with and figuring out where the PD is going to be in, in the long run. And then, the other thing we've been talking about a lot is just looking at our, our fees, so ensuring that we're covering the expenses to the city for the things that we're doing. There's a whole, you know, we've had discussions about this recently, the boat ramp stuff, but I think there's also recreation fees, I know that CD looks at their, build their, their fees regularly. You know, the, the library, are there costs that can be recovered in some way there? So, yeah, those are, those are some of the, the budget tools. If you go down to the next one, emphasize staff and financial efficiency. One thing that has come up with the new facility here coming online is just the fact that we've got a lot more floor space, and we've got HVAC equipment, and alarm systems, and all that. So I, I think what we're going to look at doing is getting a contract with a facilities manager to, to do that, so that we don't have to have city staff trying to figure out, like, respond to things as they break in underneath maintenance. That's something Curvin, Meg and I have been talking about quite a bit. I think that's the first step, rather than bringing on the full-time staff position, because it's, it doesn't seem like a full-time job, probably, hopefully.
And not to mention the challenges of finding that employee, retaining that employee, until we really know what it looks like. And this is not just this new building, it's like, the growth in general, citywide, and everything, everybody's taken on, and it's like, we've always, I think, done an okay job, and it's been very reactionary to, like, building upkeep and maintenance, which is uncommon, especially for a small town. But as things have grown, and we've taken on more other, since like it, it all adds up, so try and get away from this reactionary, or, oh, when was the last time this roof was, it's just those little things, I think we need a little more focused eye on, especially with this brand-new building and some of the more advanced systems associated with it.
Yeah, and one thing that we, that Meg is looking at is just getting a, an arrangement in place with the company to handle all the HVAC and alarm. Alarm maintenance issues that come along with the building. She's already been discussing. With a company that is specialized in that. The next sub bullet here, oh no, sorry. Any questions or comments on that? The next sub bullet is strengthen staff retention through strategic planning and target initiatives. The one thing that Dallas is, has been pursuing is getting the police force up to full strength so they can have that. Adequate coverage for our twenty-four hour service. It's two additional positions to get there eventually. Big potential cost sharing with the school district for one of those, right?
Yeah, as our position if that were an opportunity.
And then the other thing that we've been talking about internally is. Programs that we could put in place to make the city a desirable place to work without increasing salaries. Because there's just, you know, we have this, this goal reality constraint. So a, a number of cities in Idaho, actually I learned recently, do. Four-day work week schedules, so they work for ten-hour days or some variation of that. I, I think it's an interesting idea to consider. Whether that's something that would work for McCall, it depends on, you know, some. Departments, it may not necessarily work for. But it has worked in other cities in Idaho, Driggs is doing it now. What were the other cities, Michelle?
Well, Idaho Valley County has done it.
Valley County.
They're still doing it.
Yeah. I mean, the sewer district is closed on Friday.
Most just done recently.
Yeah.
To that one.
I think, yeah, one of the questions is public perception, you know, are we meeting the community needs for service? You know, could we close City Hall on Friday? How many people actually come into City Hall on Friday looking for answers to questions? But I think it's something to consider, you know, we just can't keep raising salaries, so. You can offer people some other benefit. It's, it's kind of a lifestyle alignment thing. A lot of people live in McCall because do things in the outdoors, they go camping, crafting on the weekends. Someone's got a live mic there.
Top phone number.
Any thoughts, reactions, other ideas?
The example you cited is a really good one and a lot of, a lot of government agencies have tried that and had success. The example you gave about possibly closing down a, the front office here on Fridays. Yeah, I, I don't know whether that'll work or not. I think. We're, um, council really willing to try anything that. It's reasonable, that still provides public service, but I think the pressure point would be your position for us. You would, you know, if, if we try those things, people are going to respond and you'll just have to. Decide whether there's a workaround, make sure that they're being served by me for a week.
Yep.
But I think that's a good one to look at.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting, there was.
Other cities, like you say, that have had great success with that.
And there are studies that indicate, you know, I think. Pretty convincingly that people's productivity is not necessarily tied directly to how much time they spend at their desk.
Like a lot of people would prefer that flexibility for a work-life balance than more money.
Yeah.
The other consideration isn't the point of schools, like they have an alternative.
There's certainly a bit about that for a four-day week for McCall. I mean, they, there are more Fridays off this year than there were last year. And they're going through a process of looking at whether a four-day work week would work for the schools here, but.
Yeah. That work session was, there was definitely a lot more cons than pros. Following their work session last week and. They've done that more to kind of test a hybrid to see what that looks like and how that works with their calendar. They've got a pretty. Substantial group of committees and the calendar committee that are working on it, but that presentation they gave last week.
It's definitely in the.
Lot more cons than pros to it.
It's kind of in the early stages now and, yeah.
So I don't know that that's.
But they do. Yeah.
There are more Fridays off this year.
Yeah. Yeah.
And part of my research, just kind of looking at it, you know, school districts come up as kind of government agencies and I think. Don't quote me on this, but I think I read that like forty-two out of the hundred and fifteen school districts throughout Idaho have gone to a four-day work week, so it is almost fifty percent.
And I think New Districts and Cascade have.
Meadows does for sure.
Apparently there are concerns about student achievement. Their.
Yeah.
Statistics. Show there's like a pretty significant difference in achievement between four-day and five-day school days.
A lot of teacher support, a lot of the teachers don't like it. In fact, one of them said to me, have you ever tried to refocus children after a three-day weekend? Imagine doing that.
My kids say like when they, when they have like this four-day weekend, they're coming, going to go back on Tuesday, they're going to be like, oh, you know.
Yeah.
Too.
My, my observation is the majority of our country hasn't evolved post of school mentality, so. Maybe there could be a correlation between school and employment. I think our retirement community is rubbing off on.
And the question, like working parents, you have to then find childcare.
Yeah.
Because you have to work on Friday.
Yeah.
So.
Not exist in the period.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I think we said it just right. You know, it, it's a quality of life issue and you can adjust that with pay or provide better quality of life. And I think the differences between what the city's criteria for four-day work week versus the schools is significant enough. That, and we look at it department by department and it's a very good exercise to go through and it may make a lot of sense for us. And I think the public will buy that. Given the principles we, that we use to, to make that determination. So we should go through that process.
And I think it's, I, I'd like to look at that department by department because there are a lot of departments where that. Where they're, they're providing service seven days a week.
Yeah. I think it's important to recognize too, there's opportunity to provide a four-day work week, but still having a five-day open-facing front to your public, right? So, and whether you're looking to, you know.
Yeah.
Reduce costs of having open facilities or whatnot, but there's, there's a lot of flexibility within that arrangement.
Well, I mean, the city are on seven days a week, you know. It's.
I think some people might not want attending a week because it's better for them to have more outreach in the evening, you know, and, and. If that's, um, yes, you know, flexibility in the work schedule is.
Yeah, I mean, it can. There can be different optional schedules depending on what people's needs are.
So I have a quick, just kind of procedural question on this list of stuff, like what's. But. What's the objective on some like what.
Yeah.
Where, because I don't want to like start getting too far in the weeds about stuff or. And also not provide input and avoiding that, so.
The goal is to review the priorities that you all identified in January. And I, I think one thing is to just see if those still are, you know, what, what you're, what you think they should be. And then we don't have to go through this in detail if there are specific sections you want to jump to. In terms of things that you, you know, want to provide direction or requests on for the, for the next. Budget meeting or for the development of the budget, we could do that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out is like, where does this fit into the development of the budget timeframe?
Yeah.
Because I mean, yeah, just getting this document this morning is. Some thoughts on the fly.
So some of them are more specifically related to the, the considerations of developing the bu, the budget itself.
Being the version that we're going to go through today is just. Holding it, everything top O and M, holding it as it is, absorbing additional increases and like the big one is. Personnel benefits, but we've got tariff increases and things like that. Projects, and that's kind of today. But then the next question is what additional, which I kind of see this as the additional. And I am breaking out the additional on the operations budget from like CIP projects. I, I see those as different. So the June meeting would be nice if maybe in this meeting, you, the council could give us some direction on. What the priorities, priorities are on the operations budget and then we'll bring that back in June. And then the hardcore discussion about CIP and projects will happen in June.
Okay, so, so we should maybe go through this in, with the, the operations budget in mind and. Figure out what, what these maybe are most specific to operation.
Why is as far as priorities?
Yes, it's, I mean, your priorities are touch on operations and capital projects. So it's hard to, it's hard to really totally separate.
And for me, I mean, for the discussion of today, like we can, you know, like this discussion of the, the work week, that's the, the operations.
Am I hearing that there's value in them giving you direction so that you can explore costs when you bring back the second level of the budget?
Probably, yeah.
So I think that's what they're looking for, right? Is if you're like, yeah, let's definitely explore what it would cost to go to a four-day work week or. What cost implications there would be on this particular bullet point, then that would give Randy the, the direction to go and explore those cost associations for the next level.
And, and I also, it seems like your CIP discussion hinges on the O and M and then the enhanced O and M. I mean, you, you really can't really get into a CIP discussion until that's.
Well, yeah, we got to cover bases.
Right. So it seems like if we've got our base, if we do the O and M enhancements for June, then I'll have a pretty hard number on. Where, where the O and M is at, then it's CIP all the way, you know, then you guys can really have a good discussion about CIP. It's the kind of, at least the way I'm seeing it right now.
Yeah, with these. Priorities, you can zero in on which ones are really your top priorities, which ones do you want to see the CIP, the CIP discussion? You know, which ones do you not?
Yeah, and I mean, I think that there's. Obviously, there's things on here that are from O and M and things that are the CIP. So like, I guess for the sake of the, the conversation and keeping everything. Moving, it's like, do we want to just kind of try to. Go through these and talk about stuff that might be directly related to the. O and M.
It's the number one priority. O and M items on that list so that we can work on it.
So we don't, don't get bogged down somewhere. We don't need to be bogged down. Here.
I, I can use that filter, but I think the way we were proceeding is working pretty well to be. Some of the things here, of course, are O and I and have a CPI. But anyhow, I'm, I thought we were doing, I, I, I'm really, I'm, I'm feeling good about this. Our tweet.
I'd like it too, but maybe we can just flag when you, you know, whether this is O and M or CIP and that way we can focus maybe our comments on more of the O and M stuff right now. Unless there's some CIP thing that someone feels really passionate about. Maybe we could. Either a focus.
I think a lot of the things under internal strategic and budget, budgetary development, those are, a lot of them are O and M. Items really. Yeah, I think we, we look at how we wrap these things into O and M.
I think you're on the strategic plan.
Yeah, strategic plan. So this is something we talked about in January. To be honest, it's just, I haven't been able to focus very much on this, just being in a reactive mode. But I think the first. Step that I'm going to start thinking about with that is developing some. Key performance indices, so like being able to quantify. The, the things that we are doing and accomplishing and how efficiently we're, we're doing those. What is the, you know, the per unit cost? Things like that. That's kind of as far as I've got in that. There, there are a lot of different areas of what the city is doing where that. Can factor in and we can kind of start pulling those out. But yeah, I haven't, I haven't really got very far on that. We have, you know, we have some planning projects coming up where I think that would. Be valuable to start working that in, like the comp plan update. So that, that would tie in there in my mind. Environmental management. I think a lot of this is things that we're already doing, so. The, the graves grant. So if you look at protecting the lake, natural resources, the race grant is looking at stormwater improvements. The ongoing, the thing that's ongoing that we do is the stormwater training. For contractors that the city does. So that's an O and M thing. It's not necessarily an additional expense in any way. Land use regulation, that's, I think, kind of a policy question tied to the AOI. So I don't think we need to spend time on that. Lake protection again. I think my, my idea on this is that we need to focus on issues that are under our actual control and jurisdiction. And that's, as of now, at least, it's the, the kind of land use decisions. That could all change. One thing that I would mention on the next bullet, condensed studies on environmental and development impacts on the lake. There, I think there's an opportunity coming up to support water quality monitoring and, and fill a gap that exists in the data. The state, my understanding is they test mainly that. Kind of more deep water testing, so there's an initiative. To do nearshore testing that the city, that you might have the opportunity to support. Climate action plan, do, do you want to talk about that, Michelle, or?
Well, we're on track. We're kind of finalizing that plan right now. And so assuming the council adopts it, there'll be a number of strategies and initiatives in there. So I think that is something to consider for implementation. Do we need to create kind of like a line item? In the budget, like a sustainability line item for specific projects? Or there also might be the opportunity annually. Because some of these projects touch multiple departments for specific departments to kind of budget as it relates to those projects. Thinking about like stuff like fleet transition. Energy sources, it was just operational stuff that. Maybe, maybe we're funding already, but we're shifting to one of the strategies.
That, that item about grant match is really important too.
Yeah.
To be, like you say, using the example of fleet across all different.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, really, there's always kind of opportunities that we're looking for to leverage our dollars, so. That's something we've already been doing, but a lot of times we don't have a specific kind of match available, so we're trying to figure out, how do we come up with a match? To sort of take advantage of that great opportunity.
I think those will end up being education, community engagement, as we discovered the last presentation of the climate action plan, so.
Good point.
I think that is a key, the climate action plan, I think we can use that to a much greater extent. And. Let's say greater extent, I think it can have more public. To education and help, help us leverage some of our other environmental initiatives. I've always thought that having that in place gives us the, the information and to create some of the. Policies that the public would like to use. And that's a high priority.
Yeah, and I think, you know, with that, I mean, a lot of it links back to specific initiatives. Yeah, and I think, you know, with that, I mean, a lot of it links back to specific initiatives, you know, as we think about our transportation system and those kinds of things as well. So, I mean, it's stuff that we're already kind of thinking about, it's just kind of bringing it to the forefront when we're doing decision making and budgeting.
Uh, yeah, I mean, what the specific, the tangible items that you can identify as having costs that I've seen so far are, if we make choices about our energy portfolio, that's going to be an O and M expense.
And for the council, that's basically, our staff is met with Idaho power, and so you have the ability to purchase. There's different portfolios about where your energy comes from. And so depending on what what option you choose, there is, it can be additional costs for, say renewables versus hydro versus the regular.
This is a lead by example type thing. If we need and establish this as a city, then the constituents and the county and the rest of people will say, well, we need to step up our game too in that area.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, it kind of sends that message of this is the kind of community that we are and these are the types of things that we're supporting. So those those will all be kind of decisions, I think, in the budget process.
I think it's important to remember that community engagement and education does have cost.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's. I I guess you're talking about whether you identify a specific line item for that or you wrap it into, yeah. Let's see, wildfire mitigation, I can't remember whose comment this was, was that yours, Nathan?
Go ahead for us.
Oh, was this, I'm trying to remember who put in the comment on wildfire mitigation.
Oh, yeah, sure, that might have been me. We had the Forest Service come and present to us a little over a year ago, I think. And um their basic message was, there is buku dollars out there for fire mitigation. And it's very important to access that money, that you have some kind of fire mitigation plan. And oh, by the way, McCall is in the reddest of red zones for risk to wildfire damages. So my takeaway from that meeting was, okay, we need as a community uh to develop a fire mitigation plan so we can tap into this funding. It also would likely result in private property owners, individual HOAs, being able to tap into this money as well. And in theory, like go through their subdivision and firewise their community. Right now, the funding that's available is pretty minimal. And it's only for specific things, like I think you get $500 per HOA if you match by spending at least $500. So I think we need to explore that more and understand that. And I feel like staff capacity is maxed, so us taking on this project internally may be difficult. But if we can get some resources from the the Forest Service or the McCall Fire Department to help us get there, that might be a planning document that could yield a lot of benefit in the future.
That's great, I've actually been tapped in pretty extensively with the All Lands Fire, Valley County Fire Working Group, and been attending all of those meetings. And we contributed to the CWPP and we've been working with them on how the city of McCall can work with them, share their messaging and education, and also, yes, tap into those dollars. And I'm working with Juan Benia on some of those projects as well. So I think that um I've sort of been been identified as the man to handle that one at the at this point. But I'll keep counsel up to date as we move forward.
And I think, just to follow up, I think we looked at, you know, does McCall need a its own specific plan? And then ultimately, the decision was, we have this functional regional group, let's participate in the regional group. So that's kind of where I think we ended up with it after that presentation.
We're staying informed, we're not going out on our own or renegade, we're not telling our own story, we're letting the the county lead and we're helping share that information.
It might be important to note, too, McCall Fire, some of you were on their pathways, actually discussion as well. But uh they did hire a consultant that came in, did a study, looked at fire pathways and how it would affect the city. And so there is a bunch of funding and efforts going into that, the results of that that look much more promising than what maybe people currently or previously thought, right? So um I don't know if they're going to publicize that sometime soon or if it's already out. But there is efforts going into that through the fire districts and taking care of that on their.
Yeah.
That kind of through like GIS, so we can integrate that into our GIS system as a layer, like for planning and that's where it's at as well.
It was interesting, it was a data driven thing where they looked at how fire would move. I think primarily driven by prevailing winds, so from the southwest into the community and they find the pathways that it can travel through in between, you know, where it would move in between areas, that it's not easy for it to move through. And that provides information on specifically, you know, like where you would need to thin trees or or establish some kind of barrier and also using development as a barrier. So how you, you know, how you can configure roads, parking lots, whatever, create those barriers to block the pathways. I mean, it is a becoming an increasing issue of like the insurance coverage and all of the, you know, have actual real impacts where. Yeah, I mean, it's definitely important that we the player and being proactive on. I don't, I don't, I'm working with the Forest Service and that. The firewise thing and and neighborhoods like King's Pines with us and like and we're and Adams County, so kind of this weird like multiple agency zone that we're trying to figure out how to like kind of get, you know, cross all the boundaries there between public, private different counties and stuff like that. So there's the willingness, like I know, in those agencies to try to make moves that might not be what they've been doing in the past.
There are often meetings with all of these players, if any of the council want to add this as a liaison tool. I know that you keep, some of you have different committees that you serve on. But if there's an interest in that, that's a Joe, maybe we could talk about that at a future meeting. But there's an interesting for a wildfire liaison from the council, we could definitely tap you into those meetings. There's often Sherry Mopin representing the county on those meetings, so.
Count me in then.
Great. You send debate, people.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there are a lot of efforts out there, regional kind of area wide. And I think the key for us is to stay engaged and to leverage those other resources. And through that process, identify anything where we might need to come up with our own specific funding, whether it's part of this pathway study.
On the regional approach makes sense.
Um, okay. Let's see. Waterways, yeah, um. Focus on implementation within the city, lead by example. The question I would have, I guess, for the group is, are there specific aspects of that plan where we could step up with our own resources to um start, you know, implementing some of the things that were identified but haven't been done yet? Do we want to pay for the the wake buoys in the lake or?
I I I mean, we obviously would have to work with the county on that and would have to get an ordinance putting out that no wake zone out to 500 feet. But I mean, I would, I would be in favor of of, you know, I mean, there's all sorts of excuses from the county for not doing it. You know, money, enforcement, just physical problems with doing it because the lake did all of this and everything. But I think we need to figure out something. And I mean, obviously, whatever that is, it's going to take some money. So I would support, you know, providing some money. You know, of course, we don't know what, how much or what what that implementation of the the buoys or the no wake zone would be. But I I mean, I think we need to to push the county to move forward with that. I mean, that is, I think, the easiest tool right now to manage, potentially manage impacts, shore impacts from boats. You know, maybe it'll work, maybe it won't, but I mean, that's, that's the lake management plan says we should have a 500 foot wake zone. The other, the other thing is, you know, I mean, that's come up, obviously, is this whole mill foil issue. And we've got the state coming in, doing a little test plot, dumping in some chemicals this year. But there doesn't seem to really be any sense of, I mean, I know they want to see how it works and and everything, but there doesn't really seem to be a sense of how we're going to manage this. I mean, you know, they can, I suppose, come in every year and do eight acre plots once a year. That has to be maintained, how long, I mean, are they going to be doing that? You know, so the county was putting money into pulling physical, you know, removal, you know, is is that you know, that's clearly not effective or they haven't been putting in enough money or whatever. I think we should support whatever, you know, you know, I I I guess, I guess it's like supportive figuring out what what's the plan? I mean, you know, what is the plan for for dealing with this? I mean, it might be a multi-year thing, you know, it's not something that maybe would have enough money to dump into and be like, all right, we can, we can get hundreds of people pulling this stuff and get this all taken care of in one year. But it just seems like, you know, the state came in, so we're going to do this and it's like.
So those, before before we get into the mill foil thing any deeper, the, those two examples are really good ones. And I really like in our priorities, the wording, lead by example. And I, and I was, as I was thinking of the first example, the buoy stuff. Okay, we have an approved plan countywide. We, we still have authority, in my opinion, over the city's portion of the high watermark. The first question I'd like to see explored by our legal team is, do we have to wait for three county commissioners to approve us to put buoys out on our shoreline?
Yeah.
Is that really true? We have to wait?
I don't know, I don't.
The city has no jurisdiction beyond the high watermark.
Yeah.
Whether we would like to think that or not, the the line that we drew in the water is totally imaginary.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's, it's tough and, I mean, I think we do need to push a little harder. And if we can contribute funds, I think it's going to be our most successful route. Because I mean, I sit in those county waterways and the marine deputies want the last thing they're going to do is go out of their way to pick up that ordinance again and for that waterways master plan and look at it. And they've said it point blank in meetings that we did the waterways management plan, it's done, it's behind us. They don't want to revisit another ordinance. And so it's going to take some pressure and some probably funding assistance to to try and get that. And like, e- even if that's hiring a contractor to place those buoys, we're taking it on ourselves and funding that, you know, that workload. Uh, but I think that's what it's going to take, because there's a ton of pushback from the marine deputies to not just enforce it, but to actually set the buoys and maintain the buoys.
Yeah, I wasn't envisioning that kind of collaboration from them at all. What my question would be, are we violating any state laws? And it's kind of complicated because Payette Lake's a very unique lake. And if you go back to really old legislation, it seems to imply we have quite a bit of authority. But anyway, I think that question needs to be answered, could we hire our own contractor? Do it carefully and place the buoys along the city, what we call the city shoreline? Can we go out and place those with our own contractor, yes or no? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, do we need any ordinance?
We also have to have enforceability options, right? So if, I I think you need to start in the support of getting the commissioners on board to support that so that their marine deputies and their sheriff's office is in support of that and they're enforcing that regulation. Otherwise, I think you're spending money putting buoys and there's no, there's no effect if you're not out there enforcing that, right?
Well, okay.
Should I make a suggestion on this one that, like, there's probably, you know, a handful of items that relate specifically to the city and where where we may be able to take some specific actions. Maybe we should, out of that whole plan, try to find, you know, to three things that, you know, we could try to figure out how, if if we can get one item moving forward on that, whatever it is, then, yeah.
I think that's a good point, because I mean, the plan was adopted by the city and the county. And we have a history of implementing our plans. So I think we should continue to do that, even if other agencies decide not to. That we can show the public, hey, we're doing pieces that we have jurisdiction over. Well, you know, in my mind, just part of it is a, is a political thing, I think. I mean, if you threw in all the money in the world towards putting buoys out and hiring people and enforce it, I think the county would still be hesitant to do this because it is, you know, you get the, you get the state national booking industries in here. I mean, this is a, you know, a direct regulation on their ability to use the lake how they want to and, you know, and it is tied to, I mean, obviously, it's the lake boats. Same problem. And so I think, you know, the the desire to not take this up or the county waters way, you know, thinking like, well, we did the plan, that's it done, may just be not wanting to deal with the difficulty of of passing in ordinance. I don't think that should stop us and I don't think that should stop us from pushing county to to get something. The reality is that, like, the suggested actions have been implemented in other places, so it's not, so they're not feasible. You know, there might be some challenges with Payette Lake, but there's actually new technology too that would make this stuff. As I was saying, we have, we have professionals, like, you know, give us a strategy. So hopefully what they gave us are are things that are reasonably implementable. And have been implemented. Yeah, not, not just, yeah. Yeah, I think you're right, I think, but I think that, going back to, I think the suggestion was we can look at the plan and say, what are the specific things that the city has jurisdiction and what can we do? And make sure that we move those things forward this next year.
Yeah, that's, it's going to have to come from us just based on.
I concur with everything said, and I think every step we take is just one part of the getting to the outcome, which is 10 or 20 years down the road and achievable and that we have jurisdiction over that portion of the lake that touches our city boundary. And I think that's very realistic. We we look and say, we're, we're talking about a set of commissioners and a view from the county now and a financial limitation that they can't do the things that they probably might even want to do. But in five years or 10 years or 15 years, all that can change. And I think we're playing the long game. The long game is that we have the jurisdiction and we, so when we take these steps, just keep that in mind. We're, I don't think we're fighting an enemy about managing the lake. We're trying to get to a common thing. And I think that at some point in time, the county would say, you take it. You're there, you're new police officer, you know, and where the funds come from. But anyhow, I just say we could make sure we're playing the long game on that, the long game is to have jurisdictional control of that portion of the lake.
I mean, I would say a lot of our big ideas, just based on my experience here, sometimes you introduce them in a plan and it's not uncommon. You know, when that idea is introduced for there to be a lot of rejection. But usually, I find that it's like a 10 year horizon. I mean, even look at East Lake Street. I mean, when we first talked about the idea of changing that street to like one way, it was people were not for that at all and closing the street, right? And so it just over, it's sort of like the idea gets introduced and then it just takes a while for people to sort of come to the conclusion, oh, maybe that's a good idea. And then that becomes.
I think it's a good idea. Right, I think that was helpful guidance, so yeah, some some good, some good ideas there. Transportation infrastructure, I I think I would just highlight a couple of things out of this, we have the Highway 55 swap going on. And Nathan makes the good point that the, you know, the key factor in the decision here needs to consider the financial impact to the city over the long run. And that's something that we'll find out as the study goes forward. Um, and that's something that we'll find out, um, as the study goes forward. Then. The promoting multimodal transportation, that's a lot of that is in the, will be in the CIP. And then I think also just we need to keep considering the operational costs of new things that we take on. Um, so, you know, if we're adding more pathways, are we going to spend money to clear those in the winter? Um, or, or not, do those kinds of considerations? Uh, Nathan, anything, anything on any of these points?
No, I think just, well, first, congratulations to the council. The LOT passed, so your influence on the community was successful. Secondly. We will be doing, you know, our typical deep dive in late June on the CIP and MIP for transportation. Um, with respect to budgetary constraints and Kurt's in the room, I think, um, he might be joining a irrigation walkthrough, but. The concept and the, the budgetary implications for the city maintaining sidewalks is something that's probably got. A little bit of opportunity for, for discussion. The Parks Department does a terrific job at expanding snow removal services as new sidewalks come on. But there's probably a real discussion too about, do those businesses or property owners have some burden to bear there as well? So that's the only other thing I'd add.
Thanks, Nathan.
Yep.
And maybe one more point to that is I think the climate action plan comes in on this one too, like thinking about. When we talk about transportation systems and multimodal and how people move around the community.
Yeah. Um, okay, yeah, a lot of this is CIP for CIP discussion.
Uh, great. I mean, water master plans have we done in the past five years? It seems like we. We talk to those guys at least once a year and they're telling us that it's going to cost more. And raise rates again, Nathan, it's, I don't know.
What's, what's.
Yeah, so. So the water master plan, uh, was adopted in two thousand eighteen. And we're required to have that master plan updated every five years. So, uh, we've talked about water rates and we've specifically talked extensively about. The requirements to get sixteen point five million dollars in, in bonding authority. Uh, but this would be looking twenty to forty years out in the water system. And, and getting away from what our immediate focus is and looking at the bigger picture, making sure our water rights are secure. Understanding, you know, what's the next major investment that needs to happen? Which components of our water system need to be replaced? The lead and copper rules, um, across the country have changed dramatically. And we have an obligation to eliminate all lead sources within our water system, uh, by twenty thirty-seven. So. The water master plan itself is due for a rewrite. We've not worked on the water master plan since twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
All right, thanks. Um, if no other questions on the transportation infrastructure, um, we can move on to growth and housing management. Um. Yeah, is there anything you want to say about the? The steering committee and all that, Michelle?
Um, we did do kind of a check in with our, uh, local housing action plan steering committee. Um, and I believe I emailed out kind of the meeting summary from that and basically we're kind of halfway through the plan, so we wanted to check in on implementation and see. How we're doing on our progress report, um, and how many units we've created with all of our partners. Um, so that summary is in your email. Um, and I'll get that up on our website at some point. We're going to overhaul our whole local housing page. Really outdated. It's an update. Um, I'm happy to say that we extended an offer to a housing. Manager yesterday, so we'll keep you posted if that's successful. Um, I think we're at a pretty exciting time as it relates to our housing program. We put a lot of things in place a while ago. And so now we're kind of getting to this, this place where we've been saving our pennies and I feel like. Between your land banking fund, our urban renewal district. Um, we have our incentive dollars, um, in a fund. For the deed restriction program or deed incentives program. Um, and then we have some kind of private projects hopefully coming online in the next year or two. Um, I think we're in a, we're in a good place where if we have. Then the capacity at the staff level to kind of help facilitate a lot of these things. Um, we could start making progress a lot faster on the housing initiatives. Um, so I think, but thank you, council, you've all been very supportive, um, on housing and I think we're. We have a lot of the pieces in place now. Um, I mean, ultimately, I think having a dedicated funding source is the key to all of this. But I, I think with the tools and the resources that we have, um, if we can get a person to help make some things happen. We see some more.
And then Randy will talk about this.
Just a question on that housing. To what extent is the county taking on the housing affordability issue? And being a partner in say, land banking or. Are they as committed as we are to the aspect of? Some type of subsidized housing where it's going to be?
Um, I would say that the county, um, the county doesn't have any programs in place. Um, they don't have any staffing in place. Um, they did contribute to the regional, the West Central Mountains EDC housing needs assessment. So that was really important because that was the first step. For the region and for the county, if they're gonna, um, create. A sort of a housing program, that's kind of the first step. Um, they did, their major contribution, I think, to date was they used their ARCA funds. To contribute to some units in Cascade. Um, but primarily it's been kind of. The West Central Mountains, I'd say money's kind of been funneling through them and through the housing trust. The West Central Mountains Housing Trust, which is an unstaffed.
Seems like they could be a major player with land banking. They have land that's suitable.
Yeah, and I would say the major contribution that they have given was they gave the land for the Springs Apartments. So I think acknowledging that for the purpose of housing, um, and that's a tax credit. Project, you know, that occurred a while ago. Um, that was kind of a major contribution that was, that's located within the city limits. But in terms of kind of some of these other things that we're doing, um, there, they don't have that, that sort of program or infrastructure in place.
So like their, their role would really be kind of more, I mean. I know they have a lot of land, but you know, we, if we're going to build tight density housing, we, we don't want it out in the middle of nowhere where people have to commute far distances. It seems like working with the cities and funneling their resources into what the cities are doing, um, to create affordable housing would be, yeah. So, you know, having their own deed restriction thing and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how useful that would be with.
Exactly. You need density often for, um, some of these kinds of projects and, yeah, the density should be going into the cities.
Yeah.
That's the goal.
Yeah, me too. I think they can facilitate some. They have adjacent land.
Yeah, there might, there might be offered land, land opportunities, but yeah, it just, you know, wouldn't see that as like. Way out there, I would say right before you enter the canyon.
Me too.
Apartment complex there or anything.
But it kind of ties in with the area of impact. Trade offs and, you know, give and takes, you know, that they could solve some of that issue by land banking perhaps. And the impact area.
Yeah, I have heard them talking about integrating housing into new facilities that they're considering.
More like employer provided housing or?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it was necessarily for employees only, but I can't remember. I think it was fairly vague discussion, but it was mentioned.
Some mixed use development potential.
Above a gravel barn. The question about like the, the in lieu of park fees. Park fees, could we do in lieu of housing?
Don't want to get on that.
It's actually not legal in the state of Idaho.
We tried that.
We used to have a community housing fee, um, and it was deemed to not be a legal fee.
Sleeping parks.
Just to get something going and make some money.
I mean, we did make some provisions like in our code to allow temporary and seasonal housing, so things like. Uh, for businesses like RVs or yards or those kinds of things. But we, we haven't talked about that specifically in our parks, I think. It's probably another discussion.
There's a tough one too.
Yeah.
Arding.
Yeah, I think that having the housing coordinator on board would. I mean, that person would tie into the, with the county and with the regional housing authority and all that, so.
Exactly. Yeah, I think we have some specific funding and programs in place, um, so we're in a good position. But, um, I do think there's, it's all about partnerships and coordination and sharing resources. So that person would be. Tied into kind of some of those other initiatives as well.
The impact fees, I think, maybe we could touch on that. So. That's included in the current.
Budget.
Right?
Yeah.
Is it a two-year?
Uh, it was supposed to be a one-year, but we put it on hold with the AOI project, um, and it's. Sort of shift dollar, shifted dollars. So I guess that is something that we need to think about is. Um, we're not, we're at the very, we kind of are the first ten percent of the project. So that is something to consider with the CIP.
Does that?
Because it's already underway and we're under contract.
What's the timeframe then on, just as I relate to in lieu fees for parks and for. Love to see that go to impact fees because it's just a nightmare every time we have a development project.
I mean, we're still, we still need to get information or data, um, but once we get going, I think we can go pretty quick. Um, I mean, my initial schedule is that it would be done by now, um, but. We hit pause, so I mean, we could probably hit the next development season.
Sort of a year out.
Yeah, it's probably. Maybe less than, could probably get it done in six months.
And that is to mean to have an ordinance that were, uh, impact fees are requirement for. The different levels for new development.
Yeah, I mean, we're still at the, the data collection, the very first step of the study. But, um, once they have that, then we, we have to establish a committee, work with the committee, and then we do bring recommendations and show you. Here's what it would cost for a hundred percent if you're. Um, so the fees you can decide, it'll be a dollar amount and depending on that dollar amount, you might decide, oh, we want to. Say a hundred percent of the cost is new development has to pay for it or fifty percent or you, I mean, you'll ultimately get to make those choices if you decide to move forward with it, but. Um, but yeah, we would bring you, bring you kind of options. Yeah.
But you just can't have impact fees that go towards housing.
Yeah, so that's actually one of the asks from the state is just because that's already. Um, defined in state statute, could housing be added? Because right now it's for other things like police, parks, streets. Um, and, and then there's a process in place to establish. Right by the state. We can't do it.
Yeah, I mean, I think one thing to consider on the impact fees is just that, you know, how, how, like you say, how much of the cost do you pass on and who do you? Uh, levy that on. I went to the Valley County Home Builders Council. Couple weeks ago to talk to them and just introduce myself and. Um. A lot of what they say is just, you know, it's too costly to build in McCall and that's. Um, holding you back from increasing your housing stock. Um, and all that, I, I think there are two sides, you know, there are different sides. Issue, but on whether you make some sort of adjustment to the type of project it is or whatever.
Yeah, and so some other communities, what they've done is they've created a fund so that their local housing or workforce housing. Is exempt from impact fees and so they use dollars to, so that that's not driving up the cost of those units. We often hear the, the conversation about we need more supply. Well, we know in McCall, if you build more supply. If it's just market rate, it doesn't necessarily translate into local housing units.
But this line item about the offsetting cost of the future PD facilities and excellent. If that meets the current definitions, state legislature has given us the laws on impact fees. That seemed like that's really an area we need to make progress on.
I think I'd be, maybe explain some of this, but, uh, to my understanding, meeting with.
That group, the impact fees can't pick up current costs. They can pick up growth costs, right? So say we were to buy a new facility today. Um, we could then, uh, use impact fees toward expanding that facility down the road. But you can't use impact fees to support your current costs, right? So I, I do think it's important that, uh, we implement these or, or get this process done. Much sooner than later, especially with the public works discussion, with the PD discussion. Um, because we lose opportunity to utilize impact fees towards those costs once we've already made those purchase concerns.
Yeah, and the last impact fee study that the city did and chose not to adopt the impact fees at the time. Um, because of the market, um, there was, the police department was considering a new facility at that time and so that's kind of what those dollars were for.
Dallas, you make a good point there. Um, sorry to interrupt, bile, but I, I wanted to give the context on roads too. When I had my discussion with the consultants on impact fees for roads. It's exactly that as well. You could collect these fees if we wanted to expand our roadway network. But we could not use those fees to maintain our existing road network. And obviously, maintenance of our existing networks are biggest financial burden. Expansion of roadway systems typically, um, happens through development. Now, we could identify some capacity enhancements like extending Davis Street to the south and extending Floyd Street to the, to the east. If we came up with a plan like that, the impact fees could be used for those types of improvements.
And Nathan, how about improvements to like, um, or adding sidewalks or, or separated pathways or something like that? So for instance, you know, the first part of Davis you guys redid, we didn't have money to, to put in, uh, you know, dedicated, let's say pathway.
Sidewalks, yeah.
I mean, could be used in fact, these to go back and, and, I mean, it's not really an improvement of the road. It's.
Yeah.
Almost a more new facility.
I see where you're headed. I think if we could say we needed to expand the. Uh, multimodal facilities to accommodate increased growth by adding a lane, meaning adding a bike lane or adding a pathway. We might be able to justify that. Um, I'd have to get legal counsel's advice on that, but I think there's potential there.
How about the, uh, the Boydston fifty-five? I passed. You think that would be?
If we were going to add a lane. Then we could potentially use that money, but if we were just using it to repave, probably not.
But I mean, with just the overall swap of jurisdiction.
Yeah. Two really good questions that I don't have the answer to, but certainly something we can explore as we move through this impact fee discussion. My initial reaction to what I learned was that. Well, first of all, impact fees are a political situation. It's an impact on development. It's an added cost to development. So. There may be a number of needs, um, but the transportation or the, you know, the transportation impact fee may not be as. Um, viable for us and our strategy on funding things as some of the others. But as we continue through the process. But as we continue through the process, Colby, I'll certainly ask that question and I'll ask that question about expanding pedestrian facilities.
Thanks, Nathan. Yeah, I think there's a lot of interest in impact fees. I think there's a lot of misconceptions about impact fees, but I think once people really start understanding it and we're seeing it a lot on the parks side, because we have a parks requirement for new subdivisions. So for example, it's based on a formula that's greenfield development. And we're seeing more kind of multifamily density kind of projects. So in some cases, the size of the park is actually bigger than the size of the development or they can't do it onsite. And so I think like what an impact fee does for the development community is that it really creates certainty. So we're not negotiating back and forth and there's not uncertainty. They just know it's the number that they plug in per unit. Most developers pass that on to their customers. So it increases the cost of, of housing. But if we're talking about luxury housing or high-end housing, you know, like there's a question about if people feel that or not. But, but what it does is it speeds up the process and it creates certainty. And in some cases, you know, might make more sense for them. And so we've kind of seen from the development community, we already have some projects kind of coming through as saying, we'll provide this or we'll pay the impact fees. And they're, they're kind of seeing the benefits of paying impact fees versus kind of this open-ended negotiation.
It usually doesn't. And as well in our favor as we would like it to.
It depends on who's the negotiator.
Yeah, which legal team they've hired to, yeah, it's been a roller coaster.
Yeah, especially on the park side, I think. So I think it will create some certainty and some more consistent funding. And then for residents that are already here, they can feel good that they're not subsidizing infrastructure for new development, but the new development is paying for their own impact on the community.
You could tell them to stop paying their lawyers and just give it to pubs.
We have.
As for budget though, it sounds like it is like a huge priority or should be to fund this.
It has to be.
Study to continue because we're already contracted.
We're already in a contract, so we have to do it. So if it he doesn't like carry forward, so we'll just rebudget it. That's what I've learned.
Next.
Let's move on, let's move on. I think, so I think we're almost through this. Community engagement and partnerships, these were identified as priorities. There, I mean, there's not necessarily cost with a lot of this. It's just kind of what we do day to day or what you do day to day. I thought I would mention one initiative that's, that's going on where the city is participating. It's the the West Central Mountains Resilience Strategy. So this is a study that's being, a study and strategy being developed by a group of a professor and graduate students from Boise State. And actually, Lyle and I were in the kind of kickoff steering committee meeting. Was that this week or? It's been a long week. Yeah. It's, I mean, it's, it's an interesting initiative. They're looking at sustainable economy, effective disaster management, infrastructure resilience and sustainable development and natural stewardship. So it's, a lot of it involves kind of surveying and then ground truthing the results of that survey with subject, subject matter experts. And the, the, the benefit of this is that it's not just another plan or strategy, but that it provides a tool for the region to use to leverage outside resources and funding. So it seems like a good initiative. I'm planning to participate in the steering committee. Sherry is participating and the, the West, the Economic Development Council. And then they're going to have representatives from Cascade and Donley as well. There's an opportunity for council to participate in those as well. So how, do you feel like you want to continue doing that, Lyle or?
If we had, you know, I'm on the, I'm a part of that organization at BSU. So I'm on the steering committee at the BSU. So BSU has a very renowned environmental institute, Health Climate Resilience Institute, and they bring a lot of horsepower. And just as Forrest said, when, when they're involved in doing something, then they can generate the data. And you have a non-political partisan outside group that drives the fundraising. My role at St. Luke's, we used to, we partnered with BSU at St. Luke's, we have doubled the chance to get the grants. So I think it's a little bit like that. And the woman that drives that institute is phenomenal. So I, I think if somebody would like to participate in that, it is and, and under the scope of what is resilience and of course, it's sustainability. And all of the factors that, all the factors involved and they, they are really bring some amazing structure to determining resilience. So I once, I was associated with them previously, so that's why I said in that.
Okay, so if, if anybody's interested, let me know. It's not a huge time commitment. I think it's maybe a few meetings between now and when they finalize the plan in August or September, and then they, they will present it at the next Economic Development Council Summit in November, I guess is when those usually are. Is that right?
November, yeah.
Yeah. So I can, I'll send the, I'll, I'll send the preliminary results of their strategy development that they've got so far out to everybody and you can take a look. Any other thoughts, requests on community engagement and partnership? And then maybe for the last point, Michelle, could you talk about the, the comp plan? And transportation?
Sure. So amazingly, where we typically update, well, we do update our comp plan every 10 years, best practice. It's also the sort of the, right around year seven, eight is when we start seeing, sometimes we have transition in the community or people can forget sort of where we're going and how we got there. So, so we're, we're at the place where we're ready to update our comp plan. These are just updates, not total rewrites. Our transportation master plan. We talked about doing the design review guidelines. I think we can roll it into this process. And then as part of the transportation master plan update, we would do a new parking study to really understand what's going on now that downtown construction is done. And we can kind of see how everything's functioning. And we're planning on doing this sort of as a huge umbrella for sort of our public outreach purposes so that we don't have all these different initiatives. So I mean, and there's a lot of sort of things that are interrelated. So like within the comp plan, there's a transportation chapter. We obviously talk about housing and some of those other things. So, and design guidelines tie into that as well. So we can kind of go out with, it's more efficient. Sort of if we do this all at once, that's how we did it our last comp plan and transportation master plan. And just the linkage, obviously, between land use and transportation. So we basically go out kind of with all of these projects umbrellaed with sort of a theme. We do intensive public involvement and then we develop the respective plans. This process will run over two fiscal years. So we won't feel, it'll be kind of, we'll feel the sort of financial hit over two years and not just one. And that gives us time to really do that intensive public involvement process. Last time, I think our comp plan, it was 18 months. So it was pretty intensive. And, and yeah, so that's basically it. So the goal would be to have it done in a couple of years and then we're on track for in our 10 years. And hopefully everyone's pulling in the same direction again. That's always the goal. And I always find that, you know, that first like five years, you'll hear people come to public meetings and I'll pull up the comp plan and cite it and there's a lot of kind of buy-in. And then as time goes on, people sort of disconnect from sort of the process. And also just a good way to sort of check in and say, are, you know, are we going the right direction with the public?
And by the time this starts, we'll know what's happening with the area.
Yeah. So this will definitely affect our geographic study area. You know, as you probably heard, we can do planning outside of the city limits, but we'll have to decide to what extent and what makes sense and, and that sort of thing. So I think, yeah, knowing what the boundaries are for the AOI, regardless of all the other issues is going to be really important for us.
I think another interesting part of this is the, the parking aspect. The last time that we looked at this, charging for parking was one of the, one of the, was on the menu of options out there, but at the time, the infrastructure that was required to do that was a lot more expensive or the, you know, required a lot more staff time from code enforcement. So it'll be interesting to see what the options are that come out of that.
Yeah, I think a lot has changed. I mean, our last parking study, it was staff going out with clipboards and counting cars. So I think now I think we can use technology and get a lot of these things done in a more efficient way.
Hashtag Plan Girl Summer. Said hashtag Plan Girl Summer. So like the, some of the other plans outside of the comp plan that we'll be looking at updating that we've kind of covered in here. There are opportunities for like public outreach and in conjunction with some of our comp planning. So I think when you start looking at, you know, all the planning that happens to get the, the planning fatigue.
Yeah, exactly. That's why we're trying to cluster it all into one initiative. And because the comp plan is so broad and covers so many different things that we can just plug, like when we do surveys or we're going out to events, we're able to answer a lot of the questions.
Yes.
You know, relatively easy.
Yeah, I can speak to that too. I think that, you know, we do a really good job of making sure that when we're going out to the public that I'm really dialed in on where we're going out and from every department so that we make sure that we time things appropriately and that we're not over surveying and that we're not you're creating that fatigue ourselves, you know, self-perpetuating that. So we do a good job of trying to make these things timed and I'm usually really involved in the public outreach portion of that. And that's helpful because I've even said in those meetings, oh, we're not, we can't put a survey out here because we're already doing this other thing for public art or we're already doing this other thing for transportation, right? So we'll keep a close eye on that, make sure we time it appropriately for the public.
Yeah. I mean, and this is really a coordinated effort across multiple city departments. So it all gets sort of umbrellaed under this. So it feels to the public like we're just doing one thing, but it's going to be hitting, you know, public works, parks, different departments. And yeah, Erin's always really involved in, in the public outreach piece of this.
Well, maybe we should take a five-minute break before we move on to the next part of the agenda, if there are other questions, comments.
We're in favor of that. I just want to slow responding to the community engagement partnerships. And I think that is really, when we look at the economics and federal and grants and everything affecting our major partners like schools. And I think of public works as an example, when we, you know, look 10 years down the road, might we have a unified public works facility that the school can use in some way? Or, and we just kind of start thinking about, you know, the county says we've lost a million dollars in federal funding and the school loses. And you know, pretty soon we're going to all have to be thinking a little bit more about the other key components of our community. Schools comes to my mind.
Same with the, you know, the push for this auditorium district. That's been kind of a key component of some of our conversations with them is the value and, and, and sharing resources. I mean, we, you know, our parks department works very closely with the school district maintenance. And we've utilized their equipment, they've utilized ours, especially stuff through LOT. But that's, yeah, that's, that was a key component to those conversations with, if that was in city limits, some of the benefits to sharing some of those new sources, you know, and maintenance and operations.
And as of yesterday, they have not confirmed that they had chosen a spot. So they still have three locations in the plan and they have no identified one and they don't seem to going into elections.
And knowing that, you know, that, that's more staff time, just another thing that you have to do operationally, whether it's such much a budget thing. But we look at and think about budget thing, but down the road, it could have more and more budget impact.
Thinking at a November.
Yeah.
There are their three locations.
Fairly public now. So I can say, I think that there's a portion of state land, a portion of the state 80. If they've explored, there's a private donation of land and then there's that lake flock facility. There are some pros and cons to each of them. I think they're exploring those. See what's best. I mean, Kurt and I met, we had, up in, in Forest, we identified that there would be partnerships, of course, available if they worked with the city. But we're just not sure that that's the best fit for them because the district that they've outlined does include Roseberry and other areas. And so they want to find the best fit for everyone.
I think the private, and I don't know this for sure, but I, I think it might be in proximity to the Tubing Hill, Activity Barn. But again, it's not for sure.
That's obviously they have a lot to weigh and
boundaries like the school district is, is that correct?
Not fully because that includes Yellow Pine.
Right.
So I think adjusted that boundary that, so it's not technically the school district boundary because, because of that.
I actually did not realize that.
For their judicial approval right now. So they're in line to submit for judicial approval. And then once that's done, then they can be on the ballot and then they'll be full steam ahead at that point. So yeah, so at some point, I guess they'll come back and get council an update of maybe where they're at.
Their major funding is still a 2% on short-term revenue.
They haven't identified the total amount that they've yet. Because I think they're working through what amount they need, remembering that their goal is to use that funding for O and M and not necessarily for the development of the building itself. They want to concentrate on donations for that portion. So I think that they're still trying to figure out what that sweet spot is. And I think they also can ask for a certain amount, but not necessarily collect that amount. So for example, they could say, we want to collect up to 7%, but then actually only collect four if that's what they feel the need is. So I think that there are some legality's are still sort of solidifying what they want to do.
All right. Break. So you have to leave at 11? Is that right? Do you, should we take a quick break or do you want to launch right into?
I think the boring numbers, I think.
Forrest, I need to step out just before that irrigation startup on this new facility shouldn't take long. So if there's questions for me, I'll, I'll swing back in. Thanks. Good luck.
Probably a good idea to take a, a break, whatever council wants. And I'll, I can stick around 15 minutes extra. I just have to get on the ring by 12 noon.
You don't take a break, probably people's attention will start lagging.
Good idea. Actually, that's a really nice thing to do, but Renee made me a shrimp sandwich. So I'm eating that.
You better eat it.
That's what she would get stayed warm too long.
Yep. So thank you for that offer. I'll stick around until 12:15. Capturing our priorities, it's pretty hard assignment to capture all of our creative thoughts at a retreat. I thought that discussion went great. Thanks for putting it in writing and it's a really good starting point. I think it'll really help us in the budget process and other, and other things as we monitor the budget next year. Hey, on to the next item.
So Wednesday, I spent a decent portion of the day with the state tax commission.
That'd be a good time.
I know. So. So for the version that's in the packet, this is quite a bit different than the ones in the packet. But I just want to kind of give you an update. The, the most important items are foregone. This line right here. So currently we have about four hundred and thirty three thousand and foregone. Is everybody familiar with foregone and what that is? Okay. There's three options for foregone, and this is probably the only decision point that we can talk about in June. Everything else is kind of baked in, there's not much that we can really do. So the foregone is limited to one percent of the total property tax levy. That eighty six thousand, one seventy nine is that one percent. It's in, and it's. If we're going to use it for operations, it's limited to one percent. The nice thing about this is, is that eighty six thousand will go into our base. So we'll, so we will continue to receive the three percent on top of that into the future. So it will take us approximately five years to burn down four hundred and thirty three thousand. It'll be roughly that eighty six thousand. And like I said, it'll increase the base. The other option is we could take three percent for capital. It's kind of constrained, it has to be for facility expansions and some of the things we probably have enough projects that we could use it. The problem is it does not go into our base, so it's a one time use and then it's gone. We can, the third option is we can do both, so we can take the one percent operations as well as the three percent capital. And that would probably roughly burn off our four thirty three that we have remaining. So this would be a decision for you.
Today or at the June meeting.
I programmed in the one percent. For me personally, I feel like that's probably, probably the better way, because then we, we capture that three percent moving forward. But it's totally up to you on how you'd like to do that. The other is these calculations on the side. So these are the statutory limits that I'm sure you're all kind of aware of, and this is where we're at. So this brings us right in at the three percent cap. We're not over the eight percent total, we're about four point three percent. And everything else looks fine. There's probably not even, there's probably not be much difference here moving forward when we get the final property tax assessment as well as the new construction. Because the, the final property evaluations just adjusts the levy rate, it doesn't change what we receive. The new construction is the last item. Last year it was one thirty three, so we'll see.
And it didn't make sure I understand that eight percent. It means that your total tax base cannot increase by more than eight percent of a year.
Correct.
Which really is based on how much construction, construction, all that that you had.
Correct.
Okay. And, and we are, our increase is going to be in terms of just that source of revenue up by four percent. About the amount of inflation, about the amount of C P I or.
Yeah. That's why when we get to the budget, you'll see we're pretty close. We're kind of tracking the pretty, pretty. So with the June, I'll probably have the final property assessment, but again, it doesn't matter. The August, I will have the new construction and that might be the only thing that might change.
And the other thing to remember is because of the new legislation that's what two or three years old. We don't get to capture here at the city. Construction group, the new construction. We're only capturing what eighty?
Ninety percent.
Ninety percent.
In the year that is constructed.
In the year that it's constructed and then we go over it. Oh, that's it on this one. Anybody have any questions? The next one's reserved. Oh, no, walk off from local option. Is that yours or is it? Or not?
I mean, I can talk about it if you want. Did you put the numbers in there?
Well, on the local option streets, we. Programmed in kind of the current. Basis, I guess you could say, we added about just under a hundred thousand and that represents the new. Configuration. Right, so that increased at about a hundred thousand and that's what's programmed in. I don't know if there's really any.
Yeah, I, you know, I just looked at where we're at currently and then our projections and how we're. Trending to previous years currently this year, we're trending about as flat as you can. I mean, we're slightly above, but the slight, the. The increase is really happening in the tourism part, the lodging part and not the one percent sales. So. I made a recommendation that. The budget for next year would be three point zero five zero million. Based on one percent being a one point eight million in general sales tax. And then the four percent would be one point million, one point two five zero million. And that would be equal. That would be considering that we have four percent for nine months and three percent for three months. That's how I came up with that number.
It seems really wise. So basically it's flat, there's a slight increase and it did not come from the sales tax. It came from the L O T associated with the lodging.
Yeah, that's what our projections are showing.
It's very slight and so the projections are matching that. They're not ultra conservative showing a downturn or anything, it's just.
Flat.
And the one percent, the additional one percent on lodging gets about three hundred thousand a year, I guess, but we're only getting part of partial year. Okay.
Right, because we're only getting.
So. Do you understand that? You said we're increasing it by a hundred thousand?
It's being increased to three million fifty thousand dollars. So we were at two point. Seven million, I think. So. That, based on. Our current trend and the increase in lodging.
So what was your hundred thousand dollar comment?
I think I made a hundred thousand dollars.
Randy did, but it's a little.
So we, so we took that estimate of the current year. Did that for one quarter. And then the new amount which has that additional one percent, we did that for three quarters. So it's not a full year, it's slightly low. That's what's programmed in.
I read in the newspaper that the one percent additional on lodging would generate three hundred thousand. And I don't know if that's.
That was the number that was quoted by our consultants in the, in the second meeting update to council.
That's about right, because I mean, if you think about that. Three percent generates.
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred thousand, so then one percent is going to generate about three hundred thousand. Yeah, that was in a spreadsheet that we presented.
Yes, no, that's good.
Over a twelve month period, the newspaper write, doesn't write about budgeting in fiscal years.
But that's a good question that will come up in the public of like.
It's three hundred thousand a year.
And if it was not three hundred thousand, I'd want to correct people and say, no, it's less than that.
This in paper as well, if you guys want to, you would pass this down. As personnel. For twenty six. Basically, as we prepare for the upcoming fiscal year, I just wanted to reaffirm your continued commitment to investing. In our most essential resource, which is our people. The strength of our organization depends on the dedication and talent of our employees who provide critical services. Around the clock to keep our city safe, responsive and resilient. In this year's budget proposal, we have prioritized items that support workforce stability and retention. Address market competitiveness and up our values of equity and transparency. Our focus remains on providing competitive wages, excellent benefits and a positive work environment. These investments are not only vital to recruitment and retention, but also to the quality of service our community expects and deserves. Supporting employee well being financially, professionally and personally is a strategic decision. That aligns with our long term vision of maintaining a high performing, community centered organization. Thank you for your support. So some highlights. Due to the dissolution of our longtime partner and trusted data source for wage data. We were unable to conduct a detailed salary analysis this year. We are working with so many partners to develop a database that we anticipate being ready for next year's budget. That being said, few, if any, of our peer municipalities conduct comprehensive wage analysis annually. So the lack of analysis this year is not something of great cause for concern. Typically, cities look at this every other year, sometimes every third year that they actually go through. Kind of that comprehensive deep dive analysis. The proposed budget does include a four percent wage increase for all employees, which would be implemented on October first. There are some additional internal equity adjustments as needed. That's just based on employee longevity, how long somebody's been in a position and their wage relative to the market point. We continue to offer excellent benefits as usual, no significant changes there. We have received several requests for additional staff. The additional positions are not included in the current version of the budget. They're still under and ongoing review by the city manager, so those positions may be approved and added in a future version. They're just, to be clear, they're not included in the current costs that are going to be presented here. This is a very busy slide and I'm sorry. Essentially what this goes through is kind of our rationale for getting to the four percent. So the April C P I. For everything minus food and energy is two point eight percent up. However, interesting to me, the shelter index, which is essentially housing increased four percent, which is. A larger than normal increase for, for that specific index. The average. The average base salary increase for Idaho is predicted to average about three point eight percent across all industries. Again, just the Economic Research Institute compensation forecast nationally for twenty twenty-five is three point seven two. A recent poll, about fifty-five percent of the attendees indicated in Idaho three to four percent increases. So again, I think just a point that we're tracking with what the statistics are showing. This was just kind of an interesting study that I was reading. So recruiting and retaining qualified employees remains a significant challenge for public sector. Recent research underscores why the leading factor driving these is non-competitive wages compared to market standards. Oops, sorry guys. And then a couple of things that we've already talked about. Things that could be alternative compensation that don't necessarily add to a base wage. One of those potentially something that we could look at, we haven't gone into it in great detail, is something like retention bonuses. That could be a one-time dollar amount that employees get, you know, for each year that they've worked here. A lot of employers have gone to, you know, sign-on bonuses or referral bonuses. But I think in our case, looking at retention is important. And so that's something that could be considered. The other one that came up is the alternative compensation being the four-day work week. I think that provides a great benefit to, to folks, especially in the environment that we live in, to have the opportunity for a three-day weekend. So again, those were all just kind of statistical, study-driven analysis that supports the four percent increase that we have proposed and then some future considerations. And so the, just touching on the four percent increase, the staffing requests that we have received to date that are not included in the budget. Two police officers, one recreation coordinator, full-time, one additional parks maintenance staff, full-time. Point seven FTE, so parks has asked for two additional seasonals. But again, given their shorter duration of work, even those two positions don't equal one full-time person. And then the library has requested increasing hours for two of their current employees. They're currently full-time employees that live approximately thirty-five hours a week. They've requested to increase that to forty hours a week. So there's no additional benefit cost for those particular positions. Medical insurance, we have a ten percent rate increase that I have included. That's a preliminary rate to be on the safe side. I don't believe it's going to be a ten percent increase, but I will find out at our board meeting in the middle of June, what that actual rate will be and adjust accordingly. And we've also included a preliminary five percent rate increase for our dental insurance plans. So the total personnel cost in this version of the budget is just over ten and a half million dollars. And the proposed increase is about four hundred, just over four hundred thousand dollars. That is, includes the four percent wage increase as well as the benefit increases that I highlighted on the last slide. There's about two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in wages and a hundred and forty thousand dollars in benefits. Pretty standard. I mean, I think this is kind of what we're generally used to seeing. That's about it. Kind of a high level. Do you guys have any questions?
A snappy.
Super quick.
Almost, almost as good as the kids did last night. Congratulations.
You also, really helpful. We also asked some of the other comparable cities, there's kind of a city manager distribution bus that I'm on and people were exchanging numbers, what they were looking at. And it generally was around, it was like three to five percent. What other Idaho cities were looking at this year.
If we look at our trend, it seems to me like last year we were a little bit of a catch-up that the analysis, we were lagging and the parables. We made that up. That was at five percent? Around there?
Yes, I think we were, the lag overall last year was just over seven percent. And we were able to get to zero with kind of repositioning some class, job classifications and moving our salary chart. I think we actually moved the chart four and a half percent last year. And I believe we did a four percent increase last year. So all of that kind of netted to a zero position. This year, without having that salary data available, it's really hard to say, but I would guess it's probably similar, similar position.
Then going back two years, we were slightly behind below the comparable analysis for cities or sizes, what we're.
Yeah.
That just says to me, we're kind of staying middle, I wouldn't say the middle, but the even fair or.
We do have money in the budget this year to do, to hire a consultant to do a full compensation analysis and potentially revising the way that we administer our compensation. We haven't selected a firm to do that work yet and it's obviously not going to be ready for this year's budget. It'll probably be a project that we work on through the fall and winter to get ready.
For twenty-two.
Yeah, for the fiscal twenty-seven budget. And so that's always a, who knows what that's going to say. I mean, it's kind of anybody's guess at this point or what their recommendations might be of how we manage compensation going forward. But that is something that I expect to be ready for next year's budget.
So you didn't have much or any equity adjustments this year?
They were minimal equity adjustments. There were no reclassifications because, because of not having the salary data to analyze. And so really, kind of an equity adjustment is, you know, I increase our salary chart by four percent. And then I look at, you know, you've worked here for ten years. Where does that put you in relation to the midpoint? And if you have kind of a formula that we use, that if you worked here for five years, you should be at a hundred percent of market. And then going forward, we adjust, we allow people to adjust up to five, a hundred and five percent of market. And then we don't do equity adjustments beyond that point. But as we move our salary chart, some, it's kind of a, you adjust the salary chart and then people get farther away. And so then you keep kind of adjusting those folks who are lagging up to that market point. But ultimately, the goal being to keep people in the middle of your salary chart. You don't want people maxed out. If that causes an issue that's called compression, compensation compression, that leads to some other problems. So ultimately, kind of the goal is to keep everybody in that middle realm. So they still have that room to continue growing in their position in their current grade.
So one quick question before I leave. What are we hearing from our employees? Is this, is, are there adjustments we're doing and the fine tuning and the studies? Is it bearing fruit? Do people feel more valued, like we're being realistic all in all?
I think they do. I mean, I believe that everybody has felt, you know, the increased prices due to inflation. And I think it is, you know, it's always getting harder for people to, to get by, so to speak. Especially some of the folks who are in the, the lower paying grades of our salary chart. I have heard, you know, little, little bits from them that it's just getting harder and harder to continue to live here, to afford to live here. Ultimately, you know, there is an affordability factor for us as well. And you, you know, you can't just keep increasing wages endlessly and sustain that. I mean, so it has to be a reasonable compromise that we're paying enough for folks to be able to live here comfortably. And we certainly want to retain the employees that we do have. But there's an offset, you know, with the operations costs and the capital costs and the maintenance costs. And it's really, it's a tough thing to balance. Don't envy the city manager or the city council in that, because, you know, we can't provide service without people. But we also have to maintain the facilities that, that we have committed to, that we have built. And so it's a tough thing. I haven't heard any, you know, raging complaints. I haven't had a lot of people coming to me. We had an all-staff huddle the other day. I mentioned four percent. I said, you know, it's just preliminary at this point, depending on how the budget works, that could go down. I didn't anticipate that, that going up probably. And I, you know, I didn't get booed off the stage, so.
Yay. We would call that a win. All right.
Yeah, Mayor Jav, I would, I would add to that a little bit, that, you know, it's not customary for employees to complain about wages. That's something that usually you just see that they've resigned or they've taken a job somewhere else. I think Tracy's work has been really helpful for me as I do feel a lot of concerns and questions about that when we're vacant multiple operators in the public works department. And I think that the equity adjustment program that she's created is a real helpful reminder to folks that we're taking those that work here for extended period of time seriously. So that's been really helpful, I think, to be able to communicate that back to our staff to say, hey, look, we're actually taking care of folks that have invested in this organization just as much as those that come here and are just trying to find, you know, bounce from job to job to job, which is probably less value for the city. So the program's good, I think, for the staff, just getting more educated about that. And I think with new leadership and, and having this information available as managers, we can pass that back down to our staff.
That's a great observation. That's really encouraging, Nathan. Yeah. Well, good luck, the three of you. Thanks for carrying on. I'm going to go down, the boys meeting gets apt and I'll catch up with everyone next week. But we don't envy your absence. Thank you very much.
Stay safe, Mayor.
Yeah, will do.
On the way out the door, I thought it was a great question that the mayor asked. And I think, to me, I think the priority is people over potholes. And so if people, you know, retaining the staff and paying what it takes to retain the quality. We do have an amazing staff, but the, the return is obviously what the public receives for having talent and retaining that kind of people. And if we hear complaints about potholes and we put more money to keep the staff, I think, I, I'm, that's my, in order, if we have to do on capital improvements, something, the, the four percent to me meets, I wouldn't choose that rig inappropriate, but when it comes to allocation, that we feel that we're not retaining and recruiting and supporting this level, I'd rather hear complaints on something else. Meaning streets or the, the grass wasn't mowed. The sidewalks didn't get plowed by eight in the morning, they didn't get plowed till nine.
The balance, I mean, you gotta, you gotta give the people that we hire the money to fix the potholes and do the work that people do expect. I mean, it's, you know, hire a ton of people, but if we're not giving them money to do their jobs, then, I mean, money to, you know.
The resources.
Yeah, the resources, yeah, to do their jobs. I mean, we're giving them money to, to, to be employed, but not, you know, have the resources to do what they need to, then it's.
Another comment for Tracy is St. Luke's has a cost of living allowance for two sites that they have. So they, they're uniform pay across the board, except for McCall and Sun Valley, because the cost of living in those places is higher. So, and it's structured in such a way that if you're a top earner, you don't get the same cost of living allowance as the people who struggle to live near facility.
But that's something that we've talked about.
I don't think the St. Luke's model is a beacon for anyone personally.
Yeah, I think that, I think the, the idea though of top earners receiving, you know, less of a stipend than the folks who are, you know, making fifteen dollars an hour as a custodian. Obviously, it's a lot harder to live here on fifteen dollars an hour than it is on fifty. And so that kind of differentiation is, it's different than the private sector and kind of corporate America. It's basically the opposite. And so, you know, it's something that I think is interesting. I think it's something worthwhile looking at.
It seems the same with others too, like Idaho State Police offers a housing stipend for their resident troopers.
Idaho.
Yeah, different than those in the treasure valley or throughout the state. Idaho Power does the same, right? So that's a somewhat a common norm within this area.
We've talked about it briefly. Again, we haven't, you know, really taken a deep dive into looking at that. But again, that, that would be something that I would not envision that increasing somebody's base. It wouldn't be added to your hourly rate. It would be, you know, a side program that would be maybe a set dollar amount as opposed to a percentage of wage, again, to, to better benefit the lower wage earners than the higher wage earners. Again, it's not something we're talking about implementing for this year, but it is definitely something that we have, have looked into.
Are these staffing requests going to be accommodated?
That's a question from the city manager. We've talked a little bit about it with some of the department heads and, you know, again, it kind of comes down to affordability and then that general needs assessment of the priority of those positions. And then if we can balance the budget and accommodate those, you know, with them not being in there and not having a balanced budget at this point, you know, it's kind of, it'll be interesting to see if we can accommodate those.
I mean, if anything, probably looking at a phased approach, you know, to, so you implement one piece at a time. And that way you're allowing the revenue to catch up with the costs that you're adding.
Some of those requests are, have been ongoing for a few years now. We've seen the same requests from the same folks and they have not been accommodated thus far, but folks feel a need and so they continue, as we encourage them to put those requests in each year so that we know it is an ongoing need and they still have that request. So we will continue to work through that.
I, I'll just throw my pitch in for the SRO position with schools. And that's a money saver in an unexpected manner that schools that have SROs have fewer behavioral problems than the school. They have fewer juveniles in the detention center because they have a trusted relationship with somebody they can look forward to. So in one sense, it doesn't save us money, but across the community and our partnerships, it certainly is an advantage for the school. It certainly is an advantage for the juvenile justice system. It's also expensive outcomes that can be prevented with a relationship with the police department and schools.
I think a big part of that is proper management of that position. We had it years ago in the past, right? The way, frankly, say it was poorly utilized justification of the position. And we had greater discussions with the school superintendent and their executive team, with the principals more recently. Just due to growth and, and due to issues that they see arising within the, the district that that we hadn't had to address or deal with in the past, that, you know, their concern grows more so than it did in the past. And they see a, a greater need for it now. And so again, with, with proper management, I think we can put that, that position together in a great way. It can be very beneficial to not just the district, but also to the city overall.
Okay, so I was thinking it'd probably be good just to start at the highest level. This version that you see on the screen is slightly different than the one that was in the packet, like that foregone change that was made and some other little minor things, but roughly it's, it's the same.
Um, obviously, uh, column E here, this is twenty six budget. Twenty five budget and then for, just for comparisons, you can see twenty three, twenty four actuals. Uh, one comment that was made earlier was, um, the difference. So right now. Let's just go on the general fund. Right now, we have a budget surplus, I guess you could say, of hundred four thousand versus. Four point two, uh, million deficit last year. But keep in mind. You know, we're not really comparing apples and apples. Last year, prior year, CIP was put into this O and M. Um, my strategy this year is to push all of the, uh, CIP down into that fund thirty. Um, so that we keep that O and M clean, uh, so that we can start getting some true year over year kind of comparisons. Um, also, it appears that there were some reserves used last year, probably for CIP. And that was included in the twenty five as well. So if I include the reserves in, everything shows zero. Uh, for that FY twenty five budget, which is the way it should be. In twenty six, there are no reserves included in that. Um, it's everything that we've discussed. There's no adjustments other than what Tracy talked about, the four percent and the benefits. Some tariff increases, just some general operating kind of bumps. So on the general fund side. Um, it actually, and the other change too, is, um, property tax, you know, following actual kind of like governmental fund accounting. That property tax should. In, in, in its entirety, hit the general fund. So that's what I did is I pushed all of that into, uh, fund ten. Um, as in prior years, those were spread out amongst all the various funds. And that's not really, um, correct way to do the governmental accounting. So a hundred percent of the property taxes up in fund ten. And so that's another difference, um, as well. So for the, on the general fund side, public works, library, recreation, airport, local option tax. Our debt service for the library and then, um, housing. At this point, we have, uh, a surplus of one oh four that is gonna change as we get. Uh, more numbers or clarification on some numbers. But I think it's a really nice starting point with where we're at, at this point in the budget. Golf is down here on its own, and that's because that's a, uh, enterprise fund. It should be kind of operating more like a, a for profit. I, I will say. I do an indirect cost allocation, which means overhead, um, that benefits the whole city. Is redistributed amongst all various funds. They pick up the city attorney. Um, city manager, uh, city manager and finance and other things like that. If I pull the indirect cost out of golf. This is the first year, twenty six will be the first year they're actually generating a positive operating margin. Which is really nice, about just over two hundred thousand. And I, going back, that's never happened. So this will be the very first year that they're actually generating. I'm sweeping that up into cost allocation, covering, covering that. And that's why it shows a zero. So from an operational perspective, two hundred plus thousand in the, in the black, which is awesome. But they still have a ways to go to get out. They still have to pay that indirect cost allocation portion. Actually, before I only move up this, uh, local option tax. It does have a positive balance, but I didn't want, I wanted to see the one oh four, like what is the total. Um, available in the general fund. So what I did is I just programmed a full expense. Single line item, recognizing that we haven't picked projects yet, but just to get it to zero. So that's the local options for streets. It's just zeroed out. But if we open it up and look for the account, there'll be. A large dollar amount there that's ready to be spent on projects. But I didn't want to lose sight of the total operating. Amount, you know, how close are we to budget? So don't freak out, Nathan. Yeah, that's what that is. Well, and, and what you see, um, for those of you who've done this before. Will be required to save funds. We won't spend all of our funds next year because we'll have to save funds for projects in the future, right? And so we're always reserving a certain amount. If we go negative, we'd have to ask the general fund or somebody else to cover the cost of projects, which is not what we're doing. We're just. We're not awarding contracts when we don't have the money. So we should always run in the black on streets LOT. And just can't do as much if the prices come in too high. One of the nice things about doing this more kind of standard, uh, meeting government, um, accounting standards is. Within each fund, it should be their operating expenses and the revenues that they're generating. That should be what's in that fund. Everything else, property taxes will be up in ten. So what that means is the public works is, as an example, it shows the negative three point five seven three, uh, million. So what that's telling us is that that's the amount. That, that the public works is generating in excess of the revenues they're bringing in. That is gonna be required to be paid for through the general. And it's the same with library or recreation and airport and everything else. So that kind of makes sense. So it, it really kind of gives a clean picture of operationally what each of these funds are doing. Water, because water is, um, another enterprise fund and it's, I'm calling it out on its own. I'm, I didn't put in the expense because it's not needed because it's on its own. So when you take the projected revenue coming for water, the operating expenses, there's two point two five seven million available. Uh, less holdback or whatever it is that's decided that'll pop up in the CIP discussion. So that's two point two five seven plus the reserves is available for that whole water department. Um, discussion when we, when we get to the CIP, uh, discussion. CIP is zero and that's because we haven't started on that. I threw the library in just to let you know that we weren't programming anything in. In twenty six on the library construction. Uh, so we have just over six hundred thousand sitting in reserves, but that's retainage that Nathan's working on. So when we clear that out, uh, we'll do that. We're hoping in twenty five, FY twenty five, but twenty six seems pretty clean. So I just wanted to show you that it's actually a zero. I'm showing you the ninety one for MRA and that, and I show it as a fiduciary and, and what that means is. Uh, we're just assisting. Those dollars are flowing through us. We're kind of taking care of it within our systems, but it doesn't, it's not a part of our, of our budget. So are we charging Mira for our services, Michelle?
Um, we will be talking with the board about the transfer.
Okay, I guess, you know, so one of the things Forrest has tasked us with is like find more revenue. And is that a opportunity?
We had that discussion. So. At this point, we decided not to programming it, program anything into FY twenty six, but it's on the radar.
So at that point, at super high level, um. As for where we're at today, if you want, we can dive into anything that you want, but, um. It's your call. How deep into the weeds do you want to get?
Follow that question that Nathan, what was that, that revenue was associated with what?
Yeah, uh, McCall redevelopment agency. So in the past, um, city staff supports that agency, which is a separate legal entity. Um, in other jurisdictions, if. In the cases where city staff supports them, if they don't have their own staff, um, there's often a transfer for administrative time. So we, when we develop the new district, we put that into the plan. We just haven't. Um, they have, they weren't in a great cash position before, but I think. Basically trying to recapture some of our staff time and costs is important, so. Um, so we'll be bringing that to the board for consideration for future meeting.
Thanks, I'll get it now.
I'm guessing there's probably not gonna be a lot of opposition to.
It's usually kind of still a good deal for them.
Yeah, I mean, we provide the, the finance, the treasury service and then CD staff.
And the audit.
Yeah, we do the audit, so.
They have a separate contract now for the audit, but the treasurer has always assisted in that, in cash flows and just the administration.
It was a significant staff time when we're executing their projects, right? So when we executed that Brown Park improvement project. My staff, Kurt's staff, we had a lot of expenses there. If we actually assigned a job and we could bill those hours. Then you would know how much of the general fund is supporting urban renewal with, which if you're trying to balance the books, you would then get reimbursed for that time.
The city projects supported by the MRA.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, what I'm looking at is more of like an administrative, you know, transfer fee for finances time for CDs time.
It'd be nice just to set it up as a. Read upon a mal versus having to track all out.
Not tracking hours.
Well, it makes sense when you look at it like the, um. I can't remember what you called it, like. It's applied to like the golf funds, like the.
Indirect cost.
Yes.
It'd be the same, absolutely. Anybody have the need to dive into the weeds? I mean, it's preliminary, it's really early, but I, I feel pretty comfortable with this. I mean, I think we're. We're in the ballpark and it's nice that we're in the black. Randy, I have a question. Um, historically, my limited understanding of how this has worked is like. When we're looking at, you, you, you sent the staff, the department heads, the reserve amounts. And that's next. Okay, and I'll just let you go. Okay, so if you guys are good, then what we'll do is jump into reserves. Now, from what I understand. This has not really been a, oops, let me. Uh, really well communicated out. So, um, I think this will be one that we really need to have a good discussion on. So, um, not as of today, but pretty recent. Um, this is what our current cash reserve balance is, just under twenty five million. Um, based on our current financials, this is the distribution of that twenty five million to, at the fund level. And that's pretty straightforward. There is a policy, and I included that in the packet, that there needs to be a, a holdback. Um, at the fund level, uh, for uncertainties, just as a savings account, rainy day fund or savings account. Uh, this is the amount, or these are the percentages that that policy identifies that needs to be held back for each of the funds. And it's a percentage of the budget. So, uh, column D here, this, this rolls forward from what we just saw over. So this amount right here. Um, is just under six million dollars. And so that, those amounts, I need to sequester, put to the side. Um, for the benefit of each of these, uh, funds. So of the twenty, twenty five million, roughly six million dollars. Is not accessible per that policy. Um, and it's pretty straightforward. Um. What I did is I added this new column in here. And what this is, is. For example, property tax, for the most part, uh, most of the property tax comes in two tranches, one in January, I believe it is, and then one in July, I think, June or July. So what happens is we collect a bunch of cash, but we haven't, the expenses are lagging that cash. So what this column's telling me is in the general fund, we've collected three hundred and sixty eight thousand. Ahead of what the approved FY twenty five budget is. So, so of the cash that we're sitting in, this twenty five million, about two and a half million is, I'm expecting to be spent. To support the FY twenty five budget. That makes sense. It's a little, little technical, but everybody good with that. So of that, now we're at, um, eight and a half million of the twenty five million. That is, I need to hold off to the side. The last piece here is this housing land bank. And in the policy, it's a, it's a little vague on the wording, or not vague, but there's two ways you can read the wording for this. The more aggressive read of that comes up to five and a half million, and that's the amount that I put in your packet. That we should today have held off to the side in our housing land bank. So of the twenty five million, that would be another five and a half million that we would need to come off and go into the housing land bank. The more, um. I'm not sure which would be conservative, which way, but the opposite read of that would come in about one point seven.
And that's just for the general fund, right?
It's, I would pull it out of the general fund and I would put it into the land.
Yeah.
And so the, so this will be a question, maybe for the June discussion, is. Like, what was the intent or how it was written? You know, maybe we can get some clarification on, on that. Um, section to know if it should be five and a half or whether it should be one point seven. Um, but whatever you decide, I'm thinking we probably should amend that, um, policy just to make it super clear. Uh, of what, which way it goes. So depending on your interpretation of that, um, section. Could be somewhere between one point seven and five point five. This version right here, it has the one point seven. So when you take everything out, that leaves us with about fourteen and a half million. Um, available reserves, not saying we should spend it, but that's available at your discretion. There you go.
Yeah, it is a bit confusing. So the two different numbers for the land banking are. Whether you interpret the policy as being that you should take five percent. A year from the, all of the city's reserves and set it aside. Or whether you should only take that five percent from the general fund reserves every year and exclude those other. Reserves in the, in the different funds. And we were thinking that it probably wasn't. Council's intent in two thousand nineteen or whenever that was to, to take five percent from the water fund. Or from the airport, but.
Right.
I don't, I don't, not having been here.
So if you took public works as an example, twenty four, they've got available cash of eight twenty four. The five and a half million would take five and a half, five percent of that, eight twenty four. The one point seven million does not. It only takes it off of that eight point five million.
Which we haven't done since twenty nineteen, so this is.
That's correct. So we'll have a big hit this year, depending on what you decide.
I am, I am. Oh.
I think that was a mistake.
Okay.
Sound like Chris.
The other question is, I had is about the housing fund and that. I mean, there's actually more money in that than you can see there, but that's because we're assuming that those funds are committed to pay for. Deed restrictions that are in the pipeline. Is that right?
This would be the same thing.
Housing fund.
Yeah, maybe it should be different, but I, this is the only fund. I'm aware of, or that has a question. Oh, but we. I mean, there was a bud, this year, there was a budget for, um. Paying for like that deed restriction. And actually, we kind of did a back of the napkin and we came up with about one point seven. So maybe. Maybe it is a one point seven. And so, but that was being budgeted and that's just not a really good way of doing it because. My preference is to actually earmark those funds and pull them off to the side. So we, we have that cash available versus. Keeping it in the general fund and then tracking it through the budget. It, it's just a kind of a clunky way of doing that. So let's say, so right now, we haven't budgeted, let's say it is one point seven million. We haven't budgeted any of the one point seven. If mid-year, let's say a project pops up and there's a desire to spend that one point seven. Then it would just need to go to the council, go through the normal process to get it approved and everything. So I don't even really like it in the budget because then what that tells me that. We could do it without coming back to the council and it seems like it should, no matter what i- is going on, it seems like it should come back to the council.
Yeah.
So for my.
We ultimately decided that like any major project for other reasons is gonna go to the council anyway, so you can see it anyway.
Yeah, so there's no benefit to put a budget. I'd rather just leave it out. Um, and then just if something does pop mid-year, then Michelle or whoever will. And then just if something does pop mid-year, then shall whoever will come and talk to you.
And you would have a budget amendment. So go through the public hearing process and stuff. So it's much more transparent actually to do it this way.
And it's kind of similar to the reason why you said I didn't like carry forwards. The reason why is because if you prove something in one fiscal year and the fiscal year closes and those funds weren't spent, all we're going to is put it in the next budget year. And it, and you say carry forward, then, then it kind of implies that I'm, I'm not going to ask you for approval on that within the new budget year. I'd rather just close the year out, push everything in and have you go through the whole budget process again and re-approve it. You know, maybe conditions changed like this year. You know, maybe the logic of last year for an approval doesn't apply this year. I'd rather have everything in front of you again in the new budget year and just do a full refresh approval.
So can I ask a question, kind of a second question? So if you're talking about this one point seven million being identified and being set aside, does that mean those numbers you showed us prior included a one point seven million dollar budget in them? And those would be loosened because they're coming.
In the budget?
Yeah, you mentioned there was a budget.
We haven't budgeted anything. And, and the logic is if something pops, we want to bring it to the council. And so there's no reason to budget for it.
Okay.
So that's reserves.
I have a question. And what is the restraint of using the reserves? How is it that they're set aside, they're not accommodated in the line item budget?
Like the free reserves.
Yeah.
Right, so really, when this is going to be important is at our next session. And the reason, and so because you're going to have a long list of projects and every single one, and it's going to be far beyond the fifteen million. You know, and you guys are going to have to prioritize and you're going to have to decide. My personal concern right now is, is with the way the federal government situation. How, to me, that this is the most risky piece is how much do you burn of your available cash? Because if we are, if you are now on your own for capital replacement, you know, doing all this stuff you want to do, that's it. I mean, there's no, nothing else. I mean, it might turn out that it will all fix the repair and go back to the way it was before, but I don't know. So that would be my concern is just, that's your things. I mean, that's, that's what you have. Moving forward, if we can get to the point where we have annual reserves that are going in, you know, like right now, the way it sits now, we'll have a hundred thousand at the end of that that could go in to as reserves. Another element, which I really personally like is I went back ten years and the actual to budget average spend over ten years is ninety percent. So we could probably, if on our current budget, the way it sits right now, we'll have somewhere between two and two and a half million that will ultimately won't be spent in our operating budget. I personally would like to see that redirected every year into our capital replacement. Just at the end of the year, we do our audit, we've closed out the prior fiscal year, whatever that delta is between the budget and actual, just grab that, those reserves, stick them in our capital replacement.
And then there's no allocation yet on this budget line for anticipated grants.
Correct. Well, there are some minor ones, like Dallas has got a few, but it's just a few thousand. The, the major one, like the one major one is A I P for Airport Improvement Investment Program. And it's one point three, there's a ten percent city map, so, so that's not included in there. So when we get to the C I P portion, there's going to be a hundred and thirty one thousand city match required for that. That would come out of reserves. So the next meeting is going to be a tough meeting. This will be the easy. So yeah, there's a lot of things to talk about.
Yeah, and you know, it takes, this takes streets, for example, which is e- every year augmented considerably by grants. We know, we're not anticipating this year that we're going to see those grants as we have in the past. That will affect our reserve risk.
Yeah, and to be honest, yeah, like that's going to be everywhere, like most areas. And so then the question is, you can see how much you're going to generate or what that net is. Let's walk it over. You see the, the reserves and then how much do you want to keep moving forward? Yeah, that's discussion, but it's not just going to be streets, it's going to be.
Yeah.
Other areas across the board. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's important too to learn a little bit more, like the streets L O T funds can't be used to replace the senior center. They're restricted to specific uses. Now, fortunately, the new ordinance is a lot more broad than it was before, but it's still just for those purposes. So we'll have to be pretty careful to make sure we're not saying, oh, well, you've got four million in reserves from the streets L O T, you could use that to replace City Hall if you needed to. That would not be allowed.
And I also don't think there is, it's allowed to have a reserve for L O T. It's a, you earn it this year, you spend it this year. So that's why it needs to be budgeted in full every year. And then if it's not spent, then the next year it has to be budgeted. So.
Let me understand that.
That's, um, that's why you, like the, the tourism one, the people they get paid as, as we get it because it's a pay, it, it has to be spent in the year that we get it.
If lot is all enhancements, then I think that would make sense. If lot it should is operations, then, oh, that seems weird.
I will show you the, the, where you can find out. But I know that you can't have, you can't do a reserve with it. So there's a, I will find that that spells out how that is supposed to be.
And this might be because this just really hasn't been visible before. And so this is just kind of a reset here. And if that's the case, then we'll need to know that before the next work session.
Yeah, and, and you know, you can, you can budget for future projects.
There you go.
And I know that that's not really like what you like to do, but you have to show that that money is budgeted every year.
Yeah.
So even if it's budgeted for future projects, it can't just say that, oh, we're getting three, three million dollars, but we only budgeted two million and that one million is in reserve. We, so we have to actually show it budgeted for future projects.
Which is great, actually, because it then also gives the council the opportunity to be dynamic because it's in your budget. And then if an opportunity comes up, you're like, well, we do have money in reserves for future projects. You just decided this is your future project as opposed to what you thought you were going to do during the budget process. So, and that helps because I'm like, how would we plan for a future project if we didn't save up the money to do it?
Right.
We can't spend it all in one year because many of these projects we have to save.
Build out like a C I P budget, all this has an account that just says like earmarked for future.
Because if we don't, if we don't budget, it has to go to property tax relief. And that's what the ordinance says. Anything not budgeted in that year would go to property tax relief. And we had that problem with the tourism L O T that we didn't have it all budgeted one year. And so we had like thirty six thousand that actually went to property tax relief. So we have to make sure that we're being generous in our budget of that. So we generally always over budget L O T in both streets and tourism for that reason. Now, we can do a budget amendment, we just have to identify it before the end of the year that we're going to be greater than what we've budgeted. So we would have to do that budget amendment. Otherwise, it has to go into property tax relief.
Good.
Yeah, I think that's, I think it was like seventy cents. But yeah.
That's it for me.
Do we have big street grants that we're waiting to hear on that are?
We've, we've been awarded many street grants that that money will come in, in, in the future.
And the parking lot is that one of them?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Avenue Davis Street, we just got awarded a million dollars for safety improvements. So, um, yeah, I think Randy and I will work to make sure that that's identified in the, in the budget. It's always shown as a revenue and it's always been kind of cryptic as where that sits. And I think one of the things that you'll see hopefully in future budgets is a lot more notes so that you can, I mean, it might make your budget many more pages, but it's very helpful to be like, well, where is that allocate? Oh, right, there's the note, it shows it from a staffing standpoint, that's really helpful for me too.
So the, I think the best way to do that is we made some changes on the application software that tracks all of our C I P projects. And that's where that would go. And so I'm hoping that I'll just be able to export that. So everything you guys put into that plan and system, it'll just be exported and then you guys will get that. That's versus, Cassell is just, again, it's just kind of clunky. It's hard to get stuff that plan it system is really the best. Yeah. And then I gave you the, the budget calendar. I think you've seen that before, so nothing new there. And I think.
So the only difference on July twenty fifth, it says until one P M, but really it's until you've adopted the tentative budget. So if it takes you until three o'clock, then so. Or eleven, or less. If it only takes you until eleven, then we're out of here.
Plan for a full day.
So plan for a full day on July twenty fifth. Generally, historically, we've went until like three o'clock. So just plan for a full day and then if we get out of here at eleven, we celebrate, so.
And my hope is, couple of comments about O N M, maybe just some, maybe a little more on the property tax. Just tiny amount of a time and then the majority is just going to be the final on your reserves that you have, the final on the net that each fund is generating, if they are generating. And then just, here's the list of projects and just start ashing through it. Well, it should be fun.
Bring your markers.
And I guess just confirming you guys are comfortable with like increases that Tracy's presented. I mean, as far as everything you heard, are you comfortable with kind of where O N M is at? So no adjustments up or down on anything that we talked about?
By me, is some of those staffing, we look and go, get a little more information. But that doesn't come clear until you've kind of looked at and funded your projects.
Yeah. Do, do you want Forrest to take any action on those additional positions? Or do you want to hold those, like you just said, until you go through the project discussion? Because those are going to be ongoing. I mean, projects mostly one time, but.
I mean, the benefit of having Forrest look at them now, it would be sort of solidify whether those positions are how critical those positions are. And so that would give us, I, I think if we had that information, that would be good, right?
And overall, whatever we decide to just keep it at zero, keep our budget balanced, you know, in that.
Right.
Guidance, I guess.
Hopefully, the medical insurance rate increase will be less than ten percent. Would also pay up some cash to, to fund those additional positions because it's already earmarked from personnel. So you're not moving it from somewhere else to dedicate it to personnel on giving.
Yeah.
We will have a significant increase in our I P R I P policy. We have, as you know, ongoing claims or lawsuits that will raise that. And, and then I think overall industry wide, it will be increased. I don't know that it will be as much as it was last year, but we're still looking at a pretty significant increase and we should get that in June. So by your next meeting, you should be able to, to see what it is.
Tracy, when we add employees, like, I mean, what, what was it requested? Maybe about five or six or something, full-time equivalent? Do our, like, when do our rates go up in terms of adding? Well, I mean, in terms of like adding, I mean, you're, you're talking about a ten percent increase, just general costs, not because of any changes, but if we're adding, you know, more employees, is there, at what point is there an increase in, in policy?
So that's already calculated into like the six hundred thousand dollar number, I should.
Okay.
So I have each one of those positions budgeted.
So it's not just salary, but salary.
Assuming they would have a full family, which not all of them are going to. And the ten percent rate increase is already calculated on the benefits that I assign to those positions. So that, those numbers are kind of like a worst case scenario.
Okay, yeah. You're stuck.
And libraries hours only.
Library was hours only. This number that I gave you does not include this facilities thing that you, this position that you guys were talking about earlier is not in my calculation because I, I don't have an actual request for that, so I haven't calculated it yet.
Yeah, I mean, the idea for that is to start with a service contract and not actually add a staff position, yeah.
Thank you.
Especially at this point, I think it makes more sense.
Just like time and materials and everything.
And then that way they can help us kind of identify.
You, you usually think government contracts are cheaper than?
I don't know that it's going to be cheaper, but there's a lot of uncertainty and, you know, just to better understand is like, is there the need for a full position? And also the concern of finding that employee in this market too.
I saw that.
Yeah, it just, it allows you to scale the cost of what you actually need, you know? If it's, it may maybe ten hours a week or be less. And then, so the issue with bringing on a full-time employee is they automatically are adding thirty thousand in benefits.
You don't need that, but you, you want to add someone, you don't want to, like the next year, be like, yeah, we really don't need you. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we just, we really need to just understand it's brand new building and what that shift looks like, so.
Certainly maintaining this building is a lot different skill set than maintaining the senior center. You know, when, I mean, when you're talking about employee wise, like somebody who's up to date with this modern technology and infrastructure and having somebody with the skills that can adequately maintain this is not the same person that maintain the older structure that's around.
I mean, likely anyone you contract with would just sub anything out too, so.
Yeah.
That's.
And that's a big part of it, it's just.
Right, finding somebody that knows how to fix the H B A system.
Calling the subcontractor that's going to do this.
Huge panel or the, you know, all of the different things is.
The skill set is organization, facility organizational management. I mean, you're right, you're going to call the plumber, you're going to call the landscaper, you're going to call whatever the subcontract is. And those might be direct contracts with the city or the city manager, the city council, but having someone that's the person that gets called when something goes wrong as opposed to calling the library director or the building official or Kurt's staff. And if this person ultimately becomes part of the staff, then maybe it's under the leadership of the Parks Department. But I think right now, the best thing to do is start understanding what it is going to cost. And rather than committing to a full-time position, you might start racking up some expenses so you know what it's worth.
Yes, it'll be interesting to see what, you know, what you guys come up with on potential cost for that.
For most of our facilities, the golfs, public works, parks, you know, the, the department heads are carrying that burden of organization, making sure that they're doing those things. And so that's just one of the many hats that we wear. But at City Hall, the now, the new library and community hall and the senior center, those are facilities that don't really have a, a specific individual. And what we've heard pretty loud and clear is that the library director doesn't have that capacity or experience to do that.
Worst king fits broken doors, man. Because.
No, I mean, it's change schedule.
Subsequent to Forrest.
It really seems like the, the, you know, citywide, all the facilities that are there would, you could reasonably justify a.
That's.
Same position.
Yeah, I think that would be the long-term benefit and that's what we're trying to ultimately get, like.
The staff, the squeaky door.
We've grown to a point where I think it makes sense. We've grown to a point where I think it makes sense, but let's ease into it.
Your, your comment earlier about being reactive, you know, versus, I mean, you save money being proactive, you know, not letting things deteriorate to the point where, you know, you just have to completely replace it.
Yep.
And it dovetails nicely with what Randy's talking about, it's funding replacement, right? Because as we are forced to become more organized, and we know that there's a painting project coming up, a roof replacement project coming up, a plumbing replacement project coming up, then you start saying, oh, well, now we've got a whole body of work for this year, we can easily assign that to that individual. So there's, I think it's just some maturing of this issue of facility maintenance and replacement.
You got your painter on, on call, subcontractor, they do that, this plus that plus that, instead of doing this, and two months later doing that.
Scheduled for this.
Yeah, and it's a lot. I mean, there's contracts, those contracts have to go in front of the council, the council has to approve them. So the directors are going to have responsibilities, but having that individual taking care of the legwork of.
Make sure people show up.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I, I think the reality, like John Powell has done quite a bit of this in the past, so like, the roof replacement project, you know, he's kind of managing that whole project, and he's, he's done a lot of kind of design and management, but it doesn't always work well, because a lot of times when he's really busy out in the field doing all the inspections is when these projects occur. So, so we, I mean, we definitely try to tap into him more in the winter months, when he's got a little bit more time available for those kinds of things to get ready for the next season. But I think, you know, as Kurt mentioned, it's, we're just, you know, we're decentralized, our facilities have grown, the needs have grown, so.
My thought, in comparison in this meeting, we look and say, what are the outcome and the area of impact? How that might, when it's smaller, and how that affects particularly your, your staff and show, I think, wow, the, there's easy things that your staff has to absorb that are, let's say, John.